All right, I'm going to call to order the September 3rd, 2024 meeting of the Eugene Water and Electric Board. Uh, start out with. Any items on the agenda we address? All right, moving on to items from board members and general manager.
Two things, um, if there's any reading like.
Press the button.
I gotta.
Turn it off.
It's going off and the computer's on. The microphone here. Turning off. The microphone here.
Turning off. All right, apologize. So, um, I just had a little incident where I blew my back up and for some reason, I get too grumpy or I can't sit here any longer and I have to get up and leave. It's nothing that anybody said, but it's just, it takes so much sitting that I'm done. Um, two things, uh, it's getting back to me. Frank, uh, a long time ago, we've been, I've been through two ice storms and snowstorm and every time I bark about the communications people, their lines dragging our lines down, if we talk about pushing it and I'm not going to let that one go. So I just want to just remind you that it's still in my little register of things to do and how we can progress. I haven't heard anything back since then, but how we can progress to make them do their fair share because it's not fair for our rate payers to have to pay replay lines that the communication lines are dragging down during storms. So we want to get them to trim the trees just like we have to. And the other thing is we're going to get a report back. It's not me, but we're going to get a report back on the watershed recovery fee for the.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Brown, the watershed, uh, recovery fee is scheduled as an ex, I'll say extended correspondence item in October. So this coming month and we've allocated a little time at that point to answer commissioners' questions about the status and where it is. Just generally, the fee expires in June or July of 2026. Um, we feel like there's still some obligations under the recovery aspect of its original definition. And we'll have more detail around where that stands in October. And we'll follow up on the other item. There was some potential legislative action around, uh, right of way and trees. Um, I'll follow up with Jason on that as well as staff on the communications. Attachments, so.
And if you want to stand, you want.
I'll just go to the back of the room and stand. Okay, thank you.
All right, Stu, make yourself comfortable. Other commissioners? I think. Frank, anything from you?
Um, just one quick update. We do, we did have, um, an introductory discussion with, uh, City of Eugene management and a couple of subject matter experts on their climate strategies. Uh, the initial meeting was really to review those, try and understand them and, uh, we, uh, will continue having discussions about where the work overlaps the most and where we can get the most bang for the buck. I don't have specific actions that came out of that other than, um, some more follow up on the specific strategies and where we might work together further.
Right, if there's nothing else, we'll go into the next item of correspondence.
My sense there were two pieces of correspondence. The first one was pretty brief. We had, um, very few actions in our um, audit letter from this past spring. Uh, part of standard practice is to provide updates, um, on those that specifically had to do with the, the closing of work orders and classifications. Um, and then the second piece of, of correspondence is, um, sort of initial introductory take on, um, what we're starting to see as potential legislation in the 2025 legislative session. Um, a few of the items were reported to the board and if you have any questions, um, you can air those now. Uh, Jason has joined us, uh, via, uh, phone. So if there were specific comments or, or uh, areas of interest, uh, we'd be happy to hear those.
Great. Any questions for Jason on the legislative update? Give you. Yeah.
Uh, just a quick comment. I wanted to congratulate anybody who worked on the Columbia River Treaty Agreement because I know that when I went to DC in 2019 and then went again in 2023, that was both times one of the major topics that we talked about and it was a little disheartening to see that. So I was very pleasantly surprised to see that there was actually some movement on, on that. So thank you to all who have put in years and years and years of effort on that.
I, I think that's generational because it's been going on for decades. So it, if you, it must have been your recent work that pushed us over the edge. So thank you.
All right, uh, other correspondence? That covers it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? If not, we're going to move on to public input. I neglected to do the facility safety awareness start, um, at the opening, so I'm gonna hit that first and then I will speak to, um, our plans for the public input. Um, so very quickly for everybody in the room, uh, thank you for being here. Eweb management and subject, subject matter experts are present in the room and virtually. This meeting is being live streamed and recorded. Uh, we ask folks to speak loudly and clearly and thank you for the audio system that with the microphones and the new setup in here, it feels so much better. Uh, visitor access is limited to the board, meeting room and restrooms. Restrooms are located on the first floor. If you need them, exit through the interior door at the back of the room and a security officer will direct you to the location. In the event of emergency such as a fire or security incident, please follow all instructions given by staff. And if we need to evacuate, please proceed calmly, calmly to the nearest exit and as, as directed by staff and evacuate away from the building to the farthest points of the parking lines. And then, uh, moving on to the public input, um, comments, just to make sure I think straight here, we have four, um, folks here tonight to provide public input. Welcome to those of you who are joining us to provide public input. Eweb is a public not-for-profit organization whose charter is to deliver drinking water and electricity to our community. Although this forum is not used for an open back and forth dialogue, commissioners and staff value hearing diverse perspectives and receiving community input. Speakers are asked to keep their testimony relevant to Eweb business and requested everyone share their comments in a productive, respectful manner. Should speakers or audience members become disruptive, they may be muted and/or removed from the meeting. When your name is called, you'll have up to three minutes to provide your comments. With that, I'm gonna start the public inset input sessions. And we will begin with Alan Gormazano, who is joining us by phone. And Alan, this is the time for you to press pound six, six pounds, star six.
Hi.
There you are. We can hear you. Yep, we can. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alan or Alfredo Gormazano, uh, Ward One. And I've been at a lot of meetings and you all remember me, I'm sure. Anyway, um, I've spoken a lot in the past about science only without consciousness, without awareness of the effects on humans. Moving forward with just science and just efficiency and what that actually, the damage that can actually do to people. I've said that a lot of times, you know, my opposition to these smart meters being forced upon us, um, it, you know, again, it for us out here in the world, it feels like coercion. It feels, I'm not even going to say all the words it feels like, but you know what I mean. Um, so yes, we still are very opposed to having these things put on our house, uh, houses. Um, there's, there's still at least one person that is without power because they were refusing really strongly to not have a smart meter. Um, they are harmful. They, even with the broadcasting turned off, they still create electromagnetic frequencies in your house that are not very healthy to be around. Again, it is the straw that breaks the camel's back. In some situations, we're already overloaded with tons and tons of electromagnetic pollution. And I've said all this before. But anyway, the other thing I want to talk about is with our rush to electrify everything like cars and every house and this and that and the other thing. You know, at some of the meetings, it's been stated, well, we might run out of electricity sources by such and such year. Well, yes, we very well might. And what is that going to do? Is that going to push us towards nuclear power? You know, there's a lot of people that claim nuclear power is clean, but it's only clean in the short run and that's if there's no accidents or nobody starts a war and it gets bombed. Um, but you know, in the long run, the last I checked, the half-life of plutonium was 250,000 years. So that means in 250,000 years, whatever waste product there is, is only going to be half as dangerous as it is now. What was the human race like 250,000 years ago? We have archaeologists who whenever they find something underground, they're like, oh, let's dig it up. Let's see what this is. Future generations of archaeologists are going to hit upon our plutonium that we've buried or done whatever with. We really cannot go into nuclear power. It is not a clean energy. Let's do solar, let's do wind power, let's do whatever we can to not have to do nuclear. And that's about what I've got to say. Thank you very much. Talk to you next time.
Thank you, Ellen. Next up is Linda Kelly, followed by Patty Heine.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Linda Kelly. I'm in Ward One. I'm 74 and I am retired from working in the nonprofit arena for most of my adult life. So thank you for the opportunity, um, to speak. I am testifying to encourage you during your rate-making efforts to adopt policies that will protect the most vulnerable Eweb customers in our area from increasing energy costs and to make sure that the larger, bigger energy users are definitely paying their share. Um, I'd also like to add that your limited bill assistance program, um, could be much more robust and nuanced to help people. I've recently read about places who use a percentage of income payment plan, uh, which seems to be a really good idea. Um, your low-income programs should have a mechanism to support heat pump retrofits and weatherization programs if possible. Um, I'm lucky enough to be married to a person who has a good retirement. He used to be a high voltage electrician for BPA. As a matter of fact, we put in a home heat pump last winter and I'm really thankful that we were able to afford it. Um, even though, little caveat, our house is smaller, we have a somewhat smaller unit put in and we were there for $1,500 less, but we weren't eligible for the $2,000 tax, which I think is a little strange, but that's a dreadful piece. Um, I could not have done this on my own retirement income. Um, and would likely honestly struggle to pay for the ever-increasing cost of energy along with every, everybody else. As we all try to adjust to the rising cost of nearly everything, we rely on our public institutions to actively work to create the maximum possible community benefits. Possible. I worked with Fitchland County for nine years as an agency relations person and I'm really aware and familiar with the struggles that so many people have. I oversaw all of the food pantries and the meal sites for those years. So, um, uh, I'm aware of that struggle, definitely. Um, so we're moving into an electric future as we just discovered and talked about. The transition is enormous and there must be huge public investments to get it done in time. And at the scale the climate crisis demands, I think we all are aware of that at this point. You have the ability to make this energy transition fairer through progressive ratemaking. Please consider changing your base service charges and look into that percentage of income um, plan based on the ability to pay, like a number of other electric utilities are doing. Um, and make sure that the largest energy users are paying their fair share. Um, and not related to this, but I can't resist, please be aware of geothermal and what the opportunities are there as this person talked about, nuclear is a very tricky option for baseload. And, um, Washington has just paced, passed two bills. I don't have the numbers in my mind. Um, that would support geothermal development in Washington State. So I really, I am very much of a proponent that this is what we need to do for baseload.
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks so much.
Next up is Patty Heine, followed by Dennis Horner.
Good evening, President McCray, with good peers and General Manager Lawson. My name is Patty Heine. I'm a retired naval officer and college instructor and the president of 350 UG's Global Climate Justice Organization. Thank you. We're waiting time for the public. I would also like to lose my support for you to establish progressive rate design in connection with your new. It's no secret that the effects of global warming are accelerating. Governments and institutions and organizations of all kinds face a looming deadline to make these changes from dangerous, polluting energy sources, they need reliable renewable energy. And we just need to avert the worst that we can soon. Eweb has an impressive climate action guidebook with an exceptional staff. For, I submit that the energy transition that we create as a community must include more support for those whose rising energy costs represent a daunting burden. Everyone knows the energy prices they're going through. What can we do to acknowledge this growing problem and address it with the latest thinking? Utilities across the country are trying new approaches. I think Eweb should consider innovative programs to protect loading such as percent of income payment programs or PIPs. Like a New Jersey cap or a cap on electric rates for low-income customers. Or a residential income graduated fixed charge system like California's with multiple tiers for residential users. At a time when the gap between the haves and the haves-nots has not been this great since before the Great Depression, when trusting governments and public institutions feels seamless. It's good to know that our public utility is taking time to consider how to serve our most vulnerable.
Thank you, Patty. Next is Dennis Horner. Followed by Aya Cochran.
Well, again, Dennis Horner, Ward Three. And I'm going to read a letter that I sent you all on the base second. And I'm doing this, uh, to have a historical public record concerns that are expressed in this letter. Contrary to what is asserted in Eweb Communications, smart meters are not safe whether or not, uh, they are, the radio is turned off. The hazards are real, serious and confirmed by evidence that is readily available and which you are or should be fully, fully informed. It's your duty to serve your customers and the precautionary principle demands that you either do not deploy smart meters at all or that you at least allow customers a true opt-out such that they may keep or receive an analog meter on their home or place of business. My and other customers' attempts to protect our rights to health, safety, privacy and to be free of coercion have been met with demeaning language and PR media broadsides that implicitly associate me and others with threats of violence. I personally have been surreptitiously surrounded at my home by security guards. I have asked Mr. Lawson for an explanation as to why I, who have never uttered a threat of violence against anyone in that fight, have been singled out in that way. No direct answer has been provided subsequently, but we did communicate about this. Thank you. Um, so I presume the answer is simply because I disagree with your smart meter mandate and originally informed Eweb so with a certified letter and a sign on my gate. I received several repeated bullying threats which have impacted my health and welfare to disconnect my service. I have paid my bills regularly for over 20 years and such an action is unwarranted. Over those years, I always respected Eweb and your actions for the good of our community. Now, I not only do not trust you and your false claims of serving and respecting your customers, I also believe that your dictatorial and unnecessary smart meter policy and implementation tactics are reprehensible. Now, your intimidating strong-arm tactics against me and others have come to a head and you are demanding I comply with your mafioso process, process or else you will, without further notice, disconnect me from electrical power service despite your obligation to serve your customers, except those who don't pay their bills. Under extreme duress, I'm going to take the step of agreeing to the installation of an unwanted and still dangerous radio transmission capability turned off smart meter on my house. The company Eweb and all other addresses on this letter have liability for any and all harms done to me by your policy and actions sustained.
There's a little bit more, but if it's just, if it's just quick, yeah, please finish up.
Uh, I was anxious today and any and all harms I may suffer henceforth due to the installation of a smart meter on my bedroom wall. This is my notification to you following a phone call to the meter customer support team this morning that I am choosing option two, having been harassed and intimidated into doing so. Thank you.
And last is Aya Cochran.
Uh, hello, President McCray and members of Eugene Water and Electric Board. Thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight. My name is Aya Cochran. Um, and I am the Oregon statewide energy transition organizer for the Breach Collective and I'm raising my family here in Eugene. First, I want to acknowledge the subsidy programs that Eweb already has in place. I am an Eweb customer and have taken advantage of your eBay rebate and plan to increase the efficiency of my home through your programs. I have benefited greatly from having a heat pump, which has been a game changer for my family in increasingly hot summers with their efficiency and ability to heat and cool. I would urge you to expand the program for this fantastic technology. They not only cut costs, they are an important appliance in the transition off of fossil fuels. Heat pumps are two to three times more efficient than gas or electric, electric-resistant alternatives and they keep the grid from becoming too overburdened. Because of this, as households increasingly take advantage of Eweb's predominantly clean and renewable grid. I encourage you to expand your heat pump program, including allowing low-income natural gas customers to access low-income incentives to fuel switch to high-efficiency electric heat pumps and also water heaters. Um, I also wanted to stress that not all, everyone has the same access to energy and efficient technologies. This past spring, I helped organize a weatherization workshop and heard stories of people struggling to pay bills and even one participant who hadn't been able to turn on her electricity for years. The choice between heating or lighting and other essentials should not be one anyone has to make. And Eweb should prioritize implementing progressive rate design that reduces energy burden on middle to lower income families, including modifying base service charges to lower residential customers while raising commercial and industrial customer costs. Uh, base, base service charges, um, allowing for self-attestation and removing, uh, applications and verification processes that provide barriers to to service, expanding bill assistance, income eligibility from 60% in line with other utilities in the Pacific Northwest and West Coast, uh, uh, identifying energy burden-honed businesses in the city, encouraging outreach with those homes focused on retrofits with heat pumps and other efficient technologies and more. We are really, really lucky to have a publicly owned electric utility here in Eugene and I hope you continue to grow and improve your existing systems to address energy burden, which disproportionately affects already vulnerable and underrepresented communities, particularly low-income and Black, Indigenous and people of color communities. Uh, I apologize, I have to run and have dinner with my family, but I will be listening to the rest of this meeting online. Thank you so much and have a great night.
All right, and with that, I'll end our public input session and have a moment here for commissioners to make comments if they choose. Sonia?
I appreciate all the information tonight and, uh, look forward to our rate design conversations and thank you for coming out.
I just will echo Sonia. I appreciate the comments, um, especially around progressive rate design. It's pretty clear to me that this board is supportive of making sure that we, uh, don't put low-income customers in a difficult spot. Um, and I'm looking for similarly to the, our rate design conversations over the next months. And if there's nothing else, then.
President McCray, I appreciate the comments as well. I, I think the the rate design is a pretty significant point of engagement with the community. Um, and there's various strategic pieces. There's push and pull across different objectives and values and it'll, it'll test this board. Um, it'll, it'll test staff to, to bring the board the right kinds of information. And it probably won't be months, it'll be years that we, we work on this. Um, in particular, uh, we'll, we'll come out with some ideas, um, in the next few months and then we'll spend quite a number of, of different work sessions and board meetings on different aspects of rate design. So it's a significant effort. It's incredibly important. It's probably the one touch point that touches every single 200,000 people that, that we serve. So, uh, much more to come on that.
Thanks, John. Just a quick question about heat pumps and, uh, just so I can understand it. So it's my understanding that heat pumps aren't efficient. They quit functioning when the temperature gets down below 25, 28 degrees and they switch to a heat strip and they put an excessive burden on electric consumption. Is that correct?
There are different types of heat pumps, Commissioner. Um, there is a crossover point at which it moves from a heat pump mode to a more direct, and in many cases, it's a resistive, um, type of heating. Um, there are also high-efficiency heat pumps that work down to lower temperatures. Um, that crossover point, uh, can, can vary somewhat. It's typically somewhere between 32 and 38 degrees depending on who installs it for a standard heat pump, but the type of heat pump does matter significantly in the, in the comment that you're making. It is part of the consideration when we look at incentives, when we look at electrification. Um, those loads will tend to be coincident with our peak loads, so we want to really be careful with that. Um, and so, um, yeah, it's, it's unfortunately, it's a depends answer. Um, um, now we've also looked at some studies, you know, how often do our temperatures here in Eugene drop below those points, um, as far as percentages and actually Brannald's. I'll show you a little bit later, some correlation between energy use and temperatures. And so we can, we can see that that would affect it.
I just want to make sure that we have that in the conversation because if we, if we're going to use time use charges and then the peak load and people are switching and they're using three times more electricity because of that during, during the peak periods that we could, we could be, uh, not helping. So I just want to make sure that we factor all of that in when we consider the heat pumps, the type of heat pumps. Especially that in time of use.
Right, heat, heat pumps, managing peak will be an important aspect of heat pumps, not just in the winter, but also in the summer since they act as, as particularly air conditioners in the summer. And so customer programs will have to be a part of that. Um, also when we look at our resources and the various puzzle pieces we're putting together, um, could potentially, uh, start to include some degree of utility or say Eweb scale storage that could help with some of that as well. So, um, so that we as a utility can shift our loads as well. But it's definitely part of the consideration as you mentioned.
Please, Mindy.
But actually, just to, to, um, uh, continue with that line of questions, I have, I am looking forward also to the rate design. We've heard a bunch of people wanting to present rate design. I do think that this board is, um, uh, interested in hearing more about that. Um, I feel like we keep going around in circles though around, uh, lower-income renters. Fact that the energy efficiency upgrades in their, their rentals and stuff, um, and I'm just curious, like, I don't, I guess we ever make any progress? Will, like, when we talk about rate design, are we going to talk about something based on the forward? I know it's not just an Eweb problem. Every web problem, but I just feel like we do keep kind of talking.
Oh, great. Rate design is, is corollary, but it's not directly necessarily associated with incentive work with. So there, and there's two, two sides to, to that particular issue. The data that we have historically does show that, um, low income does not mean low, low consumption. And so, um, I think we have to be, um, careful if we, we say, well, somebody is low income because they don't consume a lot. There are other. There are other ways and, and it actually correlates pretty well with our standard distribution of, of energy usage. I think looking at incentives to increase efficiencies and, and other programs is, is a piece of rate design in the sense that it, it develops your revenue requirement, which is your, you know, overall what your rates are based on. How you distribute those rates is really the rate design piece. So they're related, but they're they're not directly the same thing. And, and both of those ends will be worked as we go forward.
A clarifying question about low income households and consumption. Do you think it's fair to say that low income households are in, generally in leakier homes if they're renting homes or don't have funding to make upgrades and weatherize that, that consumption because heating is typically the largest consumer of electricity in a home, correct? You've been wrong there. That, that may be a big piece of it is that people just don't have the funds or because they don't own the home, don't have the capability to make weatherization improvements?
I don't think that's accurate from a general perspective because we're not seeing significantly different distributions between limited income and say our normal population. And so to say one is characteristically different is probably not accurate from the data we've seen. However, I, I would say that you're going to see some of that. You're going to see leakier homes, rentals. You may also see larger numbers of people living together to save money, which is also a characteristic that we, that we find in that particular segment. So I'm not sure I would generalize it that way. But it is something that we need to look into a little bit further to understand what are the, what are the key drivers, but that, and that would be one of them. But there's, it's not characteristically different from what we see across the population.
Thanks. And then to Brown's point about heat pumps and, and addressing peak is certainly something to consider when we have natural gas customers moving to electric. But when we have folks who are on resistant heat or other lower efficiency modes of electric heating, all of those, to the extent that those can be shifted to heat pumps, we'll see a reduction peak, right?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct. Ultimately, efficiency, independent of the fuel source is going to be incredibly important. And, and so when you think about conservation and efficiency, weatherization and those kinds of things, those are important aspects of how we can manage our supply going forward. So yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct.
And then there was one, I think it was I brought up the question about whether or not our incentives were available to natural gas customers. My understanding is that as long as people, as residents are customers of EWEB, they can access heat pump incentives, or is it only if they're heating primarily with electricity?
There are some incentives which are based on your primary heat source being a certain percentage of, as electric. The, the driver behind that is that gas utilities, and if you're a natural gas customer, you pay a public purpose charge, public service charge through Northwest Natural, which gets funneled through the Energy Trust of Oregon. And so those incentives typically would come through the Energy Trust of Oregon. So that's, that's the history behind it. And many of our incentives are, but some are limited. So there's, there's a few that are limited and I have to go into this specific roster to probably go down and, and share that. But it's, it is true. Some are not available if your primary heat source is natural gas.
That's helpful. Thank you for clarifying. Any other comments? And if not, we'll move on to board action. Looking at approval of consent calendar A.
Move to adopt consent calendar A.
Moved by Brown, second by Carlson. Discussion. Not will vote all in support of adopting consent calendar A. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Consent calendar B.
We adopt consent calendar B.
Moved by Brown, second by Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in support of adopting consent calendar B, calendar B. Say aye. I pass as unanimously. I'm, wow, that was quick. Good to go team. So in initial commissioner perspectives on the community interest letter. So we have a discussion. Are you going to kick that off or are we just going to step right in? All right.
President McCray, my, my intent was, was to give, and commissioners wanted an opportunity to share their perspectives on the letter and that's, that was the intent here. So there was no pre-plan.
Okay. In terms of making sure that those who are listening have some background. We as a board received a letter a couple of months ago from a coalition of partners, 18 signatures, I think, that were on that particular letter, just encouraging us to take an emergency actions related to energy efficiency, rate design and, and electrification. I do feel like it'd be valuable. I don't actually have the letter up, but I think I might pull it up just so I can touch on it a little more specifically. But while I'm doing that, perhaps if anybody has comments and wants to start conversation.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, President. Yeah, I just would like to say thank you to the, the people who sent us in the letter. It's a complicated, as, as you kind of heard in our preamble here with, with public comment. It's a very complicated web that will be weaving with rate designs, incentives, our integrated resource plan and all of these things kind of meshed together. So whenever we can get input from people, that's great. We want to acknowledge that, or at least myself, I'd like to acknowledge that the letter was seen, read, received and, and you know, I looked at and thought of. We will be getting, you know, that's one perspective that we have. We'll be getting a lot more perspectives from other industry experts that we have get within the, the organization and other community members as a whole. So I just wanted to acknowledge that the fact that some of the ideas that in there sounded very intriguing and it will be just for me, it will be hashing out the, the given takes of some of these things, you know, some of the ideas were, you know, shift the cost to the higher, higher income people or shift the cost to the higher load people. And, and I want to know what that, what consequences those may have, you know, there's costs, there's consequences that, that our base thing has on our lower income people, but then I will also want to know what the, what the other consequences may be to some of our other industries or things like that that may be dissuaded from coming here because of high costs. And, and if we lose, if we lose employers because of, of being non-competitive, that's something I would like to know too. So this is one piece of information that I'm gaining. But I know that before I make any decisions on these types of things, I'm going to want to get a lot more information so that I can make the best reasons and productive decision for my constituents that I can. So that, thank you for the input.
Thank you, Vice President Borowski. I'm just going to very quickly read into the record for folks who are listening online, the punchline of the letter that we received. They're specifically urging EWEB to increase access to high efficiency heat pump technologies, starting with heat pump water heaters. To establish progressive rate design to ensure large commercial energy users are paying their fair share. To replace bill assistance programs with percentage of income payment plans. And to better engage the community through outreach and education. And they elaborate on that through the rest of the letter. With that, other comments from other commissioners?
Hey, one more question.
Please.
And, and this is anecdotal because a lot of the input that we get is anecdotal, you know, it's like, oh, I know a person that did this. I don't know a person that did that. I had a conversation with somebody, a landlord, and I asked him about incentives for him weatherizing and making, making his, his units more energy efficient. And I specifically asked him about the, the heat pump water heater, water heaters. He said that his experience was that they do not last as long as a regular gas or electric water heater. And that the cost, even with the incentives is, it just doesn't, it doesn't make economical sense when you have a hot water heater, a heat pump hot water heater that may last eight years, that costs so much even with the incentives. As opposed to going to Jerry's and buying one for $180 and putting it in there. So I just didn't know if there was any research on how long and, and the durability of these, of these new technologies as opposed to cost benefit analysis. Again, it was an anecdotal thing, but it was somebody who had rental stock and was not encouraged to put them in even with the, even with. That's the kind of information that would help me.
Sonia.
I had a follow-up meeting and got a number of my questions answered with some of the folks that drafted this letter, but I did, out of that conversation, I did have some other questions that kind of cropped up. I'm hoping that staff can help. I mean, obviously we're going to talk about rate design. That's going to be a multi-year conversation. So skip over a, a little bit of those, but I do want to find out, as we do talk about the natural gas customers, some of my assumption had always been that the reason that some of those programs are limited and don't allow for natural gas customers is that we actually have to have payback over a time, you know, on the electricity that's used or reduced. We're still getting some kind of electricity that's, that's being used in the, in the systems. And so if you have both systems, then maybe you're not getting the same kind of payback. And maybe I'm incorrect in that assumption. So I'm just throwing that out there, challenging that as we look at these nitty gritty rate design type and, and program questions. That's one. I also do wonder from a, you know, community standpoint, you know, we have certain resources. We do know that just our climate in general is getting more volatile and how can we use all of the resources that we have to the most efficient extent possible, recognizing that sometimes, you know, using natural and, and not advocating for natural gas, but you know, we do sometimes have natural gas in the region and those homes have it already. And, and is that more efficient than buying natural gas on the market? I don't know. Maybe it is more efficient for us to pump it through electricity versus having natural gas. So that's a question that, that I have as we go through these. Very interested in these kind of differences between the, the rate design. I do question some of the, the comparisons. So the letter compares Seattle City and Light with EWEB, which I think that they're a very different market than we are. And so I don't know how we can kind of make some assumptions, some adjustments to, in size and scale of that. But from here, it looks like EWEB by and large is charging more than what Seattle City and Light charges to our larger customers, except for on the highest commerce, the highest demand commercial side, which I don't know that we have very many high demand commercial customers. So I guess as we look at rate design, having an understanding of where our customer breakdown is, is also beneficial. And then we also talked quite a bit and I heard from the group in the conversation that I had with them about the base charge. And my, again, my understanding was we have a certain level of charges that have to be paid, no matter, you know, we have, we just have fixed assets that no matter if you supply one kilowatt of energy or a million kilowatts of energy, you, kilowatt hours of energy, you still have to pay for those. And so I think that's where the base charge is primarily comes from, but maybe that's not the entire piece of it. So understanding that, again, having that refreshed would be helpful. Thanks.
That's.
Yeah, well, I certainly, I think the, the letter was timely. When we've looked back the last few years and we've identified the puzzle pieces that we need to put together strategically, there's a number of these that, some of it's technology based, some of it's making sure we have the right systems in place to work on both the consumption side, the customer side, and also the resource side, so that we can really optimize the efficiency of how we're using resources overall. The, the, the interesting part of that, the challenging part of that is that Commissioner Carlson, you, you are correct. There's a pretty significant amount of what we do to deliver or at least potentially even deliver the very first electron or the very first gallon of water. There's, there's a significant amount of fixed investment, no matter how much you're consuming. There are other pieces to it that definitely relate to peak demand. So for example, the size of the wire is based on its peak. And so there are certain equipment that where peak really matters in the amount of costs that we incur. And then there's others that you hear about, which is just sort of the standard cost of energy. Some of those are becoming more variable. And so developing rate design that mitigates the risk of variability, covering your fixed costs and doing that in an equitable way is going to be hard. But you know what? All the easy jobs are gone as far as, as far as we know. And so the, the letter identifying certain key interests, I think is important consideration. And we'll, we'll duly consider that as we dive into the very specific pieces of not just rate design, but there were a couple of other subjects of interest with this group. One of them is incentives, which is how and what do you incent? What kinds of return on those investments do you want to have? Are you doing that simply for energy efficiency? Are you doing that for economic vitality and development? Those are things that ultimately come back to this board and the organization as to what role we want to have in the community relative to those issues. And that's, that's why rate design becomes such an interesting and important topic because ultimately it reflects the organization's direction. The reason you see a lot of differences with Seattle is it's Seattle City Council that actually drives how they price, price their products. And so I'll say there's a lot of political aspects to Seattle's pricing approaches. And, and so you see differences between Seattle and a lot of other utilities, not, not just, just EWEB. That's not to say we can't learn from Seattle. We talked about SMUD in California. We've talked about SUB Next Door. All of these will provide opportunities for us to dive into these issues as well as the equity piece of it, which is equity, not just from sort of the traditionally underserved communities, but also various different types of users within the commercial side, within, within the residential side. And so it will be an interesting journey and I, I found the, the letter informative and things that will inspire us to bring, bring these issues up as we, as we walk down this course.
Thanks. I would just make one comment on the, the water heater. We also got a water heater up. Five years ago, replaced ours with a heat pump with the incentives available from EWEB. And it's been great, but it does, they are more expensive than the office shelf conventional. But when you look at the lifetime of use, I think there's a huge cost savings, especially when there's incentives available. And I would just observe that one of the things about transitioning from our current energy system to the lower carbon version that we need to move to. Across the board, there's a, going to be a lot more investment in the generator or the energy efficiency and then less expense on the fuel, right? So when we're, you know, we're, we're putting a lot of money into buying a heat pump to heat your home, but less cost to operate it. Same thing with an electric vehicle, more cost to buy electric vehicle, but less cost to actually fuel it. And that's pretty consistent across the board with a whole bunch of technologies. We're going to make bigger upfront investments and pay less to operate them. And I think there's a mind shift that collectively you're going to have to make about the purchase price. And it's something that we as EWEB can help out with, right? We have the ability to provide new interest loans on bill financing that can help adjust that and make it easier for people to swallow that.
Oh, one other kind of building off of what you've said too. I think, you know, as we have education around these programs, it's also going to be education of the installers themselves, because I also had somebody come in and quote, a, a heat pump water heater a number of years ago, and they ultimately ended up talking me out of it. Even, even as I'm, you know, sitting here, there were other reasons. We have a small house and it's not quite the right space for it, but I, I think that that's going to be true across the, the space. If there are benefits kind of long-term for the customers, how do we work with the installers who have, you know, been entrenched in installing one kind of thing? They know it. It's very easy for them. kind of long term for the customers, how do we work with the installers who have, you know, been entrenched in installing one kind of thing? They know it. It's very easy for them. It's maybe easier to just say, hey, it's new. It's not going to work. And then they can easily convince the person that they're working with there to go a different direction, even if the data or anything else is otherwise, because they're the person that's there. They've already brought them into their home. They're the last point. So I know that's not necessarily what we do as policy, but to the extent that whatever pathway we choose, we need to have a robust education program in place for both the consumers and whoever is actually doing the installation piece.
Thanks, Frank. And then Mindy, sorry. Do you want to respond to that? Or do you want me to come back to you?
I'll I'll go go ahead. I think the so first of all, I haven't read Consumer Reports on on heat pump water heaters. So I I don't, I don't know about about lifetimes. We did in our electrification study, looked at three areas of potential benefit or cost. One was the decision maker, the customer in this case, the community which was benefited through E web. And and then the sort of larger community, which is where there can be some environmental benefits or costs, depending on on the particular type of of decision that you're making. And heat pump water heaters were one of the areas where there was both significant benefit to the customer and to E web in the recovery and in the additional electrification revenue that was that was gained for that. Also, understanding the potential, the requirement to do load shifting or peak shaving, be able to control that. So it was one of those areas where there was those benefit. And part of the reason that we we have a an incentive associated with it that you can either go down to Jerry's and just buy directly, or you can buy online and have it delivered. So if you don't want to deal with the contractor right away, you can, oh, it happened to be here already. Please help me install it. So there's there's ways ways to look at that as well. But I would say the path does matter to policy. So you don't want to have policy that is not implemented because of certain barriers. So I think it is a consideration and something to mitigate. But yeah, I think I think there's other opportunities to look at that, those those kinds of programs as well.
Robski.
Thanks. And I guess I don't want to be confused of what I was talking about with my anecdote. The anecdote kind of went to Mindy's comment earlier of how are we going to get around to getting the the rental stock weatherized? Because if the if what you said was, yeah, I put it in and I'm making same savings over the years. But in the rental stock, it's a different equation. And so for us to figure out that piece is the hard part, getting that person to realize that oh, maybe your your apartment will be more marketable if you can show that it its energy costs are a hundred dollars less than the guy next door. Those types of things are what I'm I'm getting to and and getting over that hump is the hard part. Now, I understand the efficiencies and all of that, how that works out in the long run. It's Rob is Mindy was saying and trying to figure out how do we get that landlord, that property management company, those people to look at it. That's that's why I brought that up. It wasn't that I'm saying that he will keep up water pumps users aren't good. It's getting landlords to figure out that they are good.
Thanks. Thank you. I'm sorry. Can I go to Mindy?
I don't actually have anything very significant to say other than that. I really appreciate the letter. And I know now is not the time to get all the answers, the questions answered that were in the letter. But I really look forward to delving a little more deeply into those questions as we get into rate design. And as we've heard from public testimony, those questions are still being asked. So I know that they these questions have been brought up and I'm confident that they will be part of our discussion.
And I only raised the issue because of your comment and reminding myself of what happened to me when I tried to go out to to get a heat pump. I I will also know, you know, we we are also in this kind of unfortunate, you know, that we have the renters are disconnected because they're the ones that are paying, but the owners own the building. So, you know, we have that disconnect, but we also have a disconnect in that it would be better from a community perspective, in my opinion, if we could require the rental units that are over a certain age, maybe nineteen eighty and older, to have some kind of efficiency. You know, score that's put on them. And, you know, but we are not the ones that can do that. That's a city council sort of thing. So we have a disconnect there in in terms of the and limitation for what we can require. But that doesn't mean that we can't play nice with our Eugene neighbors. And maybe there's something to that effect that, you know, we could ask them to implement if there was some interest. It just seems like the only way that we're going to get that out there is for there to be transparency in what that rental stock actually looks like. And it's very hard for new renters, especially in a rental cramped market where they don't have a lot of options to begin with. I mean, they're going to be lucky if they find something regardless. So if there's not a lot of competition, they're kind of just taking what they can get.
Frank.
Yeah, I think the city of Eugene recognizes the importance of rentals in the community based on the content of their strategies and and recognizing that that's that's both a need and a challenge. And in in the situation that Eugene is in where you have basically a landlord's market and and the stock is very restricted. Whatever happens from a landlord's perspective gets passed on to the consumer. And why wouldn't they in this type of market? Because there isn't competition for somebody to go somewhere else. I will say that the challenge, I mean, we have had and I would say an appropriate amount of energy efficiency work in rental stock. If you look at, look at our history relative to the number that we do in residential overall, it typically runs around eighteen to twenty percent of our residential base, which is residential being a certain segment of a certain segment. So it hasn't been neglected, but there's also how much money do you throw at at a landlord? Or really doing what? And this is a comment from a past commissioner who was very much concerned about rewarding people for bad behavior. And well, I don't necessarily share that. I think it's a more complex issue. There are yings and yangs to looking at different sectors and segments within our population. But the city of Eugene does have it and recognizes it. It's a challenge and something that I think they feel like is is an important part of what they have to do.
And John?
Thank you. That's a good conversation. I'd like to agree with most everything that's been said here, but there's one thing I haven't heard. Everything we've talked about, money. Nobody said where this money is coming from. We've just raised rates, the highest, the greatest percentage we have in five, six years. We still have a deficit. And we're talking about more money and whether it's a low interest law, whether it's a subsidy to this or whatever, it's money. And where does that money come from? Comes from the rate papers. And so you got to, you got to keep that perspective because we're going into territory that's going to really be other, whether our average bill is going to go forty dollars a month, forty one dollars a month. After that, for the year. Those are nice.
Okay, significant.
That's a huge amount. It's a huge amount. I've seen people at podiums tell me they can't afford to three dollar rate increase when we've done this in the past. But even if it's thirty, I don't care how far I'm obviously a significant amount of money to a lot of people on big income. And we're talking about programs and things now that are going to also, we can't phrase that. And if if we we say that, you know, we're going to use less electricity, where are we going to get the money to to substitute if it was financially feasible, that everybody could be doing right now. It makes no economic sense. It has to take a sense. But we have to keep that in mind in this conversation that this is, again, my old saying, Jeff, by a thousand cuts, because rates are going where we're so hard to keep them down for so many years. And now we're trajectory that it's very long.
From my perspective, I think that's part of the reason we're getting asked to consider progressive rate design is that exactly that, so that we don't sink, especially lower income households that are or burdened by increasing rates. But also as Frank alluded to, a number of these technologies benefit the utility, like overall, E web has has an incentive to to do some of these things. They're financially benefit utility. While there's an upfront cost, there's a very significant long term benefit utility. Moderating to some degree. I think the heat pump water heaters was one of those, right? There's incentive on the front end, but to the utility as a whole, it's a benefit and not likely to push up on rates. Can you confirm?
Well, it's the the trade off is the near term versus the long term. The 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 payback in many cases was looked at over the life of the asset, which tends to be in some cases, I think, I don't know exactly for heat pumps, I'm just saying ten years. So you're looking at a recovery over ten years. So there is a a near term rate impact to to the programs we're talking about, even even if there's a long term benefit.
And buffering the utility in the long term and buffering the resident in the long term from increasing rates because they're using less electricity using that heat and water. And it's a it's complicated, as you said, a number of times.
The the tension, I think, that Commissioner Brown brings up is is absolutely correct. It's one of the tensions that we feel there. The the more things you try to do as an organization, the the more that the people, some sector or or people in general are financing. And and so there's a there's a part of just general revenue requirement and just importance of keeping the general rates low versus adding particular programs for particular purposes. Those are trade offs and those have to be vetted with with each other. So because he he's right, that many of these things do cost. There's an upfront cost to them. And how do you wrestle the tension there over near term and long term?
Then I have one question, one more question then to you, Sonya. Mindy said she was pretty confident that we would be, as we're talking about rate design, I think that we'd also talk about rentals and incentives. Are those I know they're very closely related. There's overlap there. But as we're talking about rate design generally over the next year, is incentives for rental households and low income households a part of that? Or is that something that we could or should peel off separately and wrestle in the shorter term? Maybe something we could address within a year instead of years?
So there's, there's two things, and I don't know if you noticed this, but our board agenda report is starting to fill up for twenty twenty five already. There's one that relates to what Commissioner Schlossberg asked for, and that's that we're going to have a number of different customer service policy reviews in twenty twenty five. And that's where that particular topic would would come up directly. Rate design and the distrib distribution of how your costs, cost causation is analyzed and allocated. That's rate design. Separate from that will be customer programs. And part of those, part of the reason you have those in parallel is you want to understand from a customer perspective, the segments themselves, the customers as individuals, where the opportunities and where the costs are. So that's why it's important to do those in parallel. They're separate, but they're in parallel. And the customer service policy review is 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 in the near term. And some of that is because of a new system that we have and how we want to implement it. And some of it is driven by the feedback that we're getting. So it won't be years.
Yeah.
It will be year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Singular.
Okay. Other comments on this topic? Yeah, I'm sorry, Sonya, go ahead.
I'm curious. So we have, I mean, we have a ton of incentive programs other than the sewer system. One, I haven't ever heard the the septic tank, sorry, replacement. I haven't ever heard of any of them running out of funds. Have we had any that have run out of funds? And how frequently does that happen?
Well, the I'll I'll say the one that's probably I'll say challenged the most is part of the green power program and the solar incentives. Those typically have an annual budget. And so now we did extend, I think it was last year, we did put additional funds in that, but that one has historically been been challenged.
So are heat pumps, the ductless water pump, the ductless water pumps? Heat pump water heaters. There we go.
I I'll probably get with staff to get you more specific answer that generally those are budgeted in in both an internal way and also through the incentives that we receive from Bonneville Power Administration. And I say receive from them, we actually pay Bonneville and they pay us back the money. So it's basically coming from us. It's recycling. And different programs have deemed amounts and different returns. And those, some of the reports that you get start to look at a, you know, kilowatt hour, a megawatt hour savings per dollar invested. And so we manage within that budget and and actually we're going to submit to Bonneville this year for more incentives because we're doing more work. So I would say generally, we're not fund limited in those programs. Those kinds of deemed established programs. But, you know, we have to, I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you. The next quarterly report will have more detail with.
Okay, that's great. I mean, just when we're talking about, you know, funds available, who's going to pay for what and how? I mean, it suggests to me if we're not running out, that we have more capability to provide more, but they're not taking advantage of that. And that's upon us to figure out why. You know, why are we not having such a robust system? When when I was talking to the the group in this follow up, I remember they said they released four million dollars at the state level and it was gone in like a few hours. So.
Yeah. I I will say we're fully subscribed. So I I don't want to, in fact, we go back to Bonneville for additional funds most of the time. So we're we're pretty, we're fully subscribed.
Okay. So when you say fully subscribed, we run out by June, or we just, we have to just keep going back to Bonneville and saying, hey, we need.
It's it's a pure, we historically have periodically just gone and gone, worked through the Bonneville program and said, you know, we have these project, we submit project by project. So it sort of cycles throughout the year.
But we haven't told any customers, hey, you wanted to put in a ductless heat pump and you can't. Or have.
I I don't, I don't believe so, but let me follow up.
Okay, all right. The reason, another reason I'm asking is I want to know how, do we have good ideas of what the stock in the area looks like and what that delta difference is that we really want to change? How many homes don't have windows? How many homes don't have, you know, a ductless heat pump? Like, what is that difference that we need to do to actually help the the worst off?
Yeah, I'm I'm going to steal a little bit. Brian, I know is behind me. He's probably rolling his eyes already. But the demand side potential assessment, which was part, which was a study that was commissioned by your direction as part of the the last integrated resource plan, will look at exactly what the potential is in the community for energy efficiency, conservation and demand response. And the first results will be later this year.
Perfect, because the energy that we don't have to buy out on the market is the first thing that we should do. We should absolutely try to invest in the community first because it's way more costly to
Sort of.
Get into transmission. Maybe not all cases, but.
We're going to figure out how many layers there are to the cost. So we'll understand there's so much available at this cost. There's so much available at this cost. So so we can make those comparisons because you're you're right. It's also.
It's more stable to not use it than to go out on the market and, you know, be at the whim of whatever it looks like for the next fifteen years. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Sonya. The comments? Right. We'll move on to the next topic, which is number nine, resolution number twenty four fourteen about Trail Bridge BPA exhibit A updates.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brian Booth, the Energy Resource Officer here at E web. It is my pleasure to introduce from my side over, Aaron Bush, Power Analyst here at E web and Megan Caffey, Energy Resource Manager. They're the real experts on this one. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it to Megan.
And before I pass it to Aaron, excuse me, I just want to say that this is a required step in our communication to BPA to receive cost based federal power for our change in Trail Bridge operations. So I'll pass it off to Aaron.
Hey, hi, everybody. And hopefully I was listening intently to your discussions. Hopefully I remember everything I'm supposed to say here. I would say in general, what Megan is pointing at is this is about our Bonneville contract. There's a lot of moving pieces and we're just trying to provide Bonneville with some clarity moving forward. So So um just a little table setting, uh the goals, again about Bonneville contract and replacement power. Uh, talk a little bit more in depth about Trail Bridge operational commitments that we have. Bonneville requirements for receiving replacement power uh for those changes in operations uh timeline that looks at kind of Bonneville's contract timelines and our timelines for Trail Bridge, uh and then ultimately that board resolution. Uh, so as I just said, and Megan did, the goal tonight is really to talk about uh getting updates to our Bonneville contract uh for those operations changes at Trail Bridge. So basically, because this is a forward looking thing, we need to provide Bonneville with clarity and certainty about what is going to be happening at Trail Bridge. And that's what we need to do in order to get replacement power from Bonneville, right? They don't want to give us replacement power if the thing is still generating. They only want to do it if we actually need the power. Just of note here, there's two specific time periods for the Bonneville contract that we're looking at. One is that 2026 to 2028 timeframe. Uh, that's under the current contracts, so replacement power over the next three years. And then the post 2028, so under the new contract, kind of that tier one uh lower cost uh based power uh under that provider of choice contract. Um, so diving a little bit deeper into the Trail Bridge commitments. Uh, so as you're all aware, Trail Bridge is the re regulation facility for Carmen Smith. And as part of the Carmen Smith uh license requirements, basically said, uh you web, you need to install permanent downstream passage uh for fish at Trail Bridge via the spillway. So basically modify the spillway at Trail Bridge, pass all of the water through that instead of the turbine, which would mean ceasing generation at Trail Bridge. We're basically spilling all the year round for fish passage. Um, but that implementation has been delayed due to dam safety concerns. Um, and so while there were some initial kind of interim measures as part of the FERC license, there's additional kind of inner, I'm calling interim, it's not the official term, uh spill that would basically reduce Trail Bridge to the minimum generation. We've done testing to see how little water you can put through it and not kind of wreck the the turbine. Um, and spill the rest of it through the spillway. So basically, starting in the near term, you'd be passing as much water as possible through the spillway. And reducing generation to minimum and continuing that until that downstream passage is in place, the permanent solution. Uh, so looking at the Bonneville side, so Trail Bridge is a dedicated resource in our Bonneville contract. So basically, that means for Bonneville's perspective, we're using Trail Bridge to serve U-Web's load. Um, and because Bonneville is a federal agency that got statutes, uh in order to remove resources like that from our contract, they have to meet these statutory requirements or we can ask for administrative discretion. Uh, but we do believe that Trail Bridge can, we can demonstrate that Trail Bridge meets some of these. Um, they're listed briefly here, it's lost obsolescence retirement, don't want to get hung up on those details. But basically, if you can show that the resource, you've lost it due to something outside of your control, like a FERC license or a natural event, obsolescence um is something where, you know, that's beyond repair and you can't get replacement parts. And retirement does consider the economic viability of it, it's just no longer viable to run it. But in general, for us, uh the distinction here between Trail Bridge and Lieberg, right? Lieberg has stopped working, we couldn't run water through it, um and so there was no generation. And so for Trail Bridge, it's still operating today and it will be operating in the future. And the whole point of this resolution and the thing here is that we need to create as much certainty for Bonneville saying, hey, we're forward looking here. This is what's going to happen. And that's what can determine us getting replacement power in the future. Um, so I've got the timelines here, uh E-Web and Trail Bridge on the top and Bonneville on the bottom. So starting with Bonneville, uh you can see those two timeframes for the contracts in the lower right. Uh, so it's that 2026 rate periods, that's the current contract, a few years of uh power. And then starting in 2028, the new uh Bonneville contract. And for both of those time periods, uh just Bonneville's processes, they take a long time, they've got a lot of stuff going on. Uh, and so there's literally deadlines to submit requests next month, by the end of this month. Um, and so that's kind of what's driving, you know, delayed doing this as long as possible to get as much certainty as we could. We're at the end of the road and saying, okay, this is what it is, Bonneville, here's what we can guarantee we're going to do. Um, on that Trail Bridge side, so what does it actually mean? Uh, upper left, so that in minimum generation, so basically spilling everything that we can uh with the current configuration and running the rest through the the power plant to that minimum generation amount. Uh, for Bonneville's purposes, we're guaranteeing that we're going to implement that by October 2025. Uh, likely that will happen much sooner, but again, that's just the Bonneville deadline. And on the the upper right hand corner, that permanent downstream passage is the goal um by 2030. But you'll notice that the construction phase uh overlaps with that new contract period. And so that's where we need to work with Bonneville to figure out like, what is the appropriate amount? How do we reflect this appropriately? Um, and then put a load bank in here in the middle. You know, Carmen and Trail Bridge are at the end of a radial transmission line. And when that line goes down, there's still water coming in to the reservoirs and it needs to go somewhere. Um, we are improving habitat for fish that if we spilled the water over there, it would not be great for the fish habitat. So instead, the goal is to put water through the turbine and dissipate the energy at the load bank that's situated there. There might be some beneficial overlap, while that's not something that's designed for the Bonneville contract. Uh, we might be able to kind of have some synergy where it helps us meet some market contract requirements. Um, so in general, I just want to kind of reiterate, this is, there's a lot of stuff that is going on here. We've worked closely with generation um and trying to reflect what we know and they've worked on with all the interested parties. Um, and this is really just a Bonneville specific thing, trying to give Bonneville clarity. So in that context, uh it's basically affirming things we've already said we're going to do. Uh, they're listed out in a little more detail in the memo um in in that operations document. But happy to answer questions, but in general, just recommend uh moving motion. Uh, this is something we'll be working with Bonneville to uh get replacement power in the future.
Thank you, any questions?
I've got more questions than we've got time. You totally lost me and confused me, I've been following this since 2008. So um so you're going to stop you, we're going to stop generating at uh Trail Bridge for downstream passage instead of the the $40 million floating downstream passage thing that we're going to do. So what fish are going down there? There's no fish are going up there. So what 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 is going downstream?
And Lisa is on to answer all of the fish related questions.
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, so uh what fish are moving downstream? We do have a temporary fish passage in place, there's a temporary trapping halt in the spawning channel. That's prop that both Chinook and bull trout would be moved from that temporary um trapping hall, though we expect it to be mostly Chinook. Um, bull trout have been angled from just below Trail Bridge Dam and put up stream of Trail Bridge Dam for the last many, many years. And so that will continue as well. So we have interim downstream passage for all species and uh including the two listed fish species, bull trout and Chinook salmon.
Thank you, and so what's the downstream passage constructing?
So downstream fish passage from a permanent sense sense will be modifications to the spillway there at Trail Bridge Dam. So rather than that floating fish screen for downstream passage that was in the 2008 settlement agreement, the uh revised and restated settlement agreement has downstream passage via the uh modified spillway. So in that sense, once we make uh modifications to the spillway to improve um fish passage conditions, then uh and also um complete construction of upstream passage. So we need both upstream fish passage via the trapping hall, which is the current license requirement, and downstream fish passage via modifications to the spillway, complete before we can shut Trail Bridge off completely. And the reason for that is we need uh to be able to move the water um downstream. And the only two ways to move water are either through the power plant or down the spillway. So when the spillway is closed for construction, we need a safe way to move water through the project.
And my last comment and question is that, so that means we're going to continue trapping hall for the next 10 years?
The temporary trapping hall will be in place until permanent uh fish passage is constructed, both upstream and downstream fish passage, that's the plan.
We're going to, okay, we're going to continue to operate that the way it's running right now. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
But it's just seems like a whole lot of stuff that is kind of very expensive. But a few fish that are artificial, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, just independent of the the various approaches to to fish management. The the point of this is to basically cast a reservation with Bonneville that says we would like to have cost based tier one power replacement for this particular Trail Bridge's future. That's that's the actual official filing that we have to make with Bonneville. And that's why we're doing this now is because of Bonneville's deadlines. The history of why and how relative to fish, um there's lots of history and knowledge um in the in the etherware up there with with Lisa and others. But the the point of this particular reservation or uh resolution is to make that sort of legally statutorily required reservation with Bonneville to get replacement power. If that clarifies it.
Thank you, Borowski.
Thank you. Um, you know, kind of a little bit with it around here. I understand that why we're doing this is to, so that we can get the power replaced from Bonneville. That's that's the uh, but but to me, we're losing the 10 megawatt nameplate generation resource, you know, that's currently putting out 3.3 megawatts. Basically losing that clean energy that we've invested in, our our customers have invested in for years and years, years building it. Couple of questions, if if for some reason Trappin Hall isn't the option that ends up being built and that there is a fish ladder that is built, could the Trail Bridge be reenergized as part of it? Is that an option once we pull this lever?
Yeah, I'll take that one, Commissioner Borowski. Uh, the current plan is to cease generation at Trail Bridge. In order to continue generating at Trail Bridge, we would need a different method for downstream fish passage other than the spillway. The alternate method would be a floating fish screen, which in and of itself is so expensive that it probably does not um balance out the generation that we would gain from Trail Bridge.
Therefore, yeah, my question is, is if we've all seen what's going around, if if we're if we're mandated by another agency to put in that more expensive fish ladder, does that necessarily mean that Trail Bridge is, when we pull trigger and say to BPA, we're not using Trail Bridge anymore? Is there any way to bring it back if we can get the fish up and down?
Separately from the pieces that Lisa was talking to on the mechanics of moving fish up and down with Bonneville, I would expect that they will put some openers in the language that says, hey, if you don't meet this, we're going to have a clause that like you no longer get the replacement power. Um, so I I think there is a limp, like very, very small risk of anything averse with Bonneville specifically on this. Um, so like for Lieberg, for example, in our letter from Lieberg, so there's an official, we made a request that said, hey, we Lieberg meets all of these requirements, X, Y, and Z. And we took funzle a while, but we got a letter back that said, yep, we agree, you're going to get replacement power. But if Lieberg comes back online, we rescind replacement power. And I think that's basically what would happen in this case.
And then the last thing, it was right before this, you you mentioned uh E-Web installs load banks. Has that been, what's the cost of load banks? And has that been factored into our cost of licensing for Carmen? Is that going to be something that's going to come to us in a year or two and say, oh, you guys, we have to do load banks and it's another $15 million?
I'll take that one as well. Um, I think the current estimate for the load bank is 20 million. It is included in all of the budget um numbers that you've been seeing for the last um couple of years uh with slight adjustments here and there. So that won't be in, that won't be added on.
At some point, if I could get a memo as to what the heck a load bank is, that would be helpful.
It's a.
Sure.
And. Go ahead. I was going to say, that's my my joke answer, but it's basically like resistance heat and you just literally dissipate the energy, your resistance in uh, so you're not using it, right? So it's just literally a place you can send the energy. It's for the generation for the electricity from the power plant. So basically, we have, so I don't know if Lisa will want to get into this, but the the because it's on that transmission line and you have water that's incoming, you have to pass the water.
Right.
Um, there's basically, we we need to pass it through the generator at times rather than hurt harm fish. And so when you pass it through, but there's no transmission line, like the power's got to go somewhere. Um, and so that's what the load bank is for, is when you have to run water through the turbine, but you don't need the power because you don't have somewhere for it to go, you send it to the load.
That to that be batteries?
Uh.
It is.
Go ahead.
Yeah, batteries are essentially, it's a a battery bank.
Yeah, a little more information on that would be helpful for me, thank you.
I mean, that's not the technical term, but um but that's a good way to think of it.
Big regulator, John.
But if it's, I I mean, the battery technology is coming on, so if we could load back into a battery and then use that battery for for heat hours or whatever. It just put it around. Thank you.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion.
Brown to adopt um resolution number 2414.
Is there a second? Moved by Brown, second by Schlossberg, the other discussions? Hearing none? Plug in your nose?
Oh, my nose, yes.
All in support, please say aye. I passes unanimously with a note of one nose held.
Right, um, moving on to item number 10, resolution number 2414 about E-Web avoided cost prices update. Mr. Booth and Hart.
All right, uh, we do have the treat of a rare uh power planning triple header tonight. And this is a phase three, so I hope you all are enjoying the show thus far. Uh, joining joining me for the next one is our planning supervisor and recovering power trader Jonathan Hart, uh who's here to talk about avoided cost.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, sounds like this is working. Uh, tonight I'm going to talk about avoided cost pricing. In short, E-Web must publish a forecast of avoided cost prices every two years. We have done so many times, um and it's time to do it again. Uh, normally, we manage this update through correspondence alone. Uh, but this year, staff have updated the methodology for how we calculate avoided costs and uh wanted to walk through that update and provide opportunity for the board to ask questions before we pass this year's resolution. Um, so just some quick reminders here. Purpa is a federal law passed in 1978 in the wake of a national energy crisis. It contains several facets that attempt to align national energy supply with demand, including aspects that work to create um market for resources developed by non utility power producers. Uh, it does this by requiring all electric utilities like E-Web to buy power from facilities that qualify under the law at avoided cost should they seek to do business with us. Avoided cost is a complex topic, uh but for this conversation, let's define avoided cost as the price that holds our retail customers harmless. Um, to support purpa, Oregon law requires that E-Web file a 20 year non binding forecast of avoided costs every two every two years. Uh, think of these prices as a jumping off point for what E-Web might pay for incremental generation. Um, historically, E-Web's avoided cost has been low, given our surplus resource positions. Uh, but the times, they are a change in. And uh and staff believe that it's time to update our methodology for calculating avoided costs to reflect. Uh, one, we need to maintain alignment with our purpa publication requirement. So there is a requirement that we do this. Um, but two, maintaining avoided costs uh as a relevant generation valuation tool. Avoided cost doesn't have to be used for just purpa alone. Um, updating this rate can serve multiple purposes. Um, so what's driving our change in methodology? Uh, since our 2023 update was published, uh we have seen changes in E-Web's portfolio needs and the Northwest Energy Landscape, uh which can both impact the calculation of our avoided cost. Uh, for E-Web's needs, our 2023 IRP indicated uh that we might need more resources soon. The IRP also uh contained an action plan that directed staff to develop a resource acquisition framework and to explore the maintenance of existing resource contracts. Uh, E-Web is also engaged in the development uh of a Northwest Resource Adequacy Effort, which will result in emergent portfolio capacity requirements for E-Web. Um, uh, thinking about the Northwest Energy Landscape, uh. regulations like the Washington Climate Commitment Act have been very impactful to Northwest Energy Markets, what we pay for electricity in in some situations. As our changes in regional load and resource balances, there's been over the last couple of years, a lot more demand and at times less supply due to, you know, closures of coal plants and things like that. Also, there are growing concerns about the pace of transmission development in the region, which indicates that the location of resources may begin to matter more, you know, relative to where you can get transmission access. So this year's methodology update tries to account for those sorts of things or reflect these sorts of changes in in what we're doing. So which elements specifically are shifting? Here's a simple table that shows how these factors have shifted since the 2023 update. EWEB is still obligated to provide a 20 year forecast, so that hasn't changed. Avoided cost still includes energy value, but 2025 includes some additional value streams in the form of environmental value, REX and carbon capacity value, potential transmission savings, those sorts of things. In 2023, we used spot market prices for energy. That's a forecasted price that comes through like our Aurora tools that we're using for the IRP. But given incredible run up in what we see in forward market prices, the 2025 update includes a blend of these forecasted prices, but also forward market energy prices that are being transacted today. So we're kind of evolving the way we think about the value of energy in the near term and for the long run. Finally, instead of publishing a single avoided cost, we are breaking out avoided cost by generator type because we believe that that added definition will help clarify the different generate what that different generators produce different value streams for EWEB, given their specific characteristics. This is a pretty common practice for other utility avoided cost publications like Portland or Pacificor in the state of Oregon. Okay. So this is a very large table of data, which we're going to break down for you real quickly. First column, these are existing avoided cost prices from 2023. Again, it's a single price for 20 years, generally low and stable. This was based on a specific forecast at that time. The next four columns reflect the avoided cost that we are proposing for the 2025 update. We have four different resources. And now I'm got something popping up on my screen. That's not very helpful. A biomass or a co-gen type of resource, wind and two types of solar. You can see that to start pricing for all of these resource types are higher than our singular 2023 pricing, signaling that the value of these resources to EWEB has grown, at least in the near term. For periods beyond 2028, prices reduce substantially. This reflects the fact that beyond 2028, the value of incremental resource is not clear to EWEB. We are currently working on our 2025 BPA product decision. Our BPA product decision could have a substantive impact on EWEB's forecasted avoided cost. And so until we have certainty in the space, staff believe that it is prudent to maintain a conservative energy only perspective for periods beyond 2028, at least for now, until we have more certainty for where we're going beyond those periods. Thinking about the application of these prices, this is the last slide before the resolution slide. These prices reflect the best information that we have today and can be applied to multiple purposes, including purpa generators, non purpa independent generators, because those can exist too, and customer generation programs. These prices are indicative forecasts and they are subject to revision as needed. New information about EWEB's needs or the Northwest Energy Landscape could trigger an update on an as needed basis. If a QF, a qualifying facility under the purpa act wishes to seek a purpa contract with EWEB, avoided cost is again the place to start. But pricing will be determined for the generator based on its unique generator characteristics. Contract terms will be subject to negotiation and board approval. Same logic applies for non QF resources and customer programs. Again, these are good and helpful indicative prices, but everything still comes back here for final decisions. So this is the end of the presentation, but this update requires formal approval. As such, a resolution has been drafted for your consideration and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
What's the risk for us if any of the data in here is not, I mean, it's a forecast, so you know, it's inevitably going to be wrong in some way or another, but what is there any risk to us if it's drastically wrong in one way or another?
So generally speaking, I don't think that there is risk here. The state requires us to publish a forecast of what we think our avoided costs are, but it's a forecast taken at a specific period in time. It's indicative. We've thrown up an idea for independent power producers to consider what are an idea for what we think we would pay. But if they had interest in coming to us, we would have a specific discussion about their generator and then we would bring those things back to the board for further discussion and review.
Great. That's all I needed to know, because it means my level of attention to it is going to be pretty limited. I'm going to move to approve resolution, resolution 2413, which directs staff to file an updated set of avoided cost prices with the OPUC. These prices will serve as EWEB's forecast of avoided costs until such times the board approves new values.
Got a motion, any discussion? Do you have some second? I'm going to go to Borowski for
Well, she put a motion on the floor, second.
Okay, seconded by Brown.
Yeah, so I've got a few questions. Will you explain the difference in pricing for 25, 26, and 27s? Because those value is higher out there for this type of of resource. It's higher in the market. So that's why cost us. That was one of my questions when I saw that, that it drops down points significantly. So Ed, you anticipate that once we get a BPA contract and and some of those uncertainties are known, that we'll come back and revisit this again? Or are we going to wait 20 more years and put it back out there?
And so we have to at least publish a new avoided cost schedule every two years, but there's nothing to stop us from publishing a new schedule on an as needed basis. It is common for say, investor owned utilities to publish new avoided cost rates, for example, whenever they update their IRP. In 2025, we're making a Bonneville product decision and not necessarily a full IRP, but that could be a period of time in which it's appropriate to revisit this.
I guess I just want to know a little bit more about the small QFs. Any small QFs that were have contracts with, I think it's in the memo, it said, we don't have any contracts with any small QFs as of right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. We don't have any.
So small and small QF is three megawatts or less is setting a base base price at that is
So so to be clear, and it it is complicated. So EWEB's board does not have specific policy around the sizing or generator types that qualify under that we don't have a small QF type of program. That is a state policy that applies specifically to investor owned utilities. If the board should decide to have a program like that, which is a thing that could do, it would potentially be beneficial if, for some reason, we saw a large flux of small generators coming in and you didn't want us to bring every one of those contracts to you for consideration.
So so the language on the small QFs that's in the memo isn't in the resolution?
It is. No, it is not in the resolution. It is. It is background information to explain that while the state of Oregon requires us to publish these avoided cost rates, the state of Oregon has many other sorts of of, I think, sometimes useful regulations that do not apply to EWEB because we're our own regulating body.
And this, you may be able to help you with this one. Just so I know where where and what a small QF is or what what range we're looking at. What's the co-gen plant that IP has? What kind of what kind of power are we getting out of the co-gen plant? Is that, would that be under three meg?
No, it is. The type of power is biomass, which would be a qualifying facility, but it is too large to be a QF.
Oh, it's it's not too large to be a QF. It would not be for state of Oregon purposes considered a small QF.
Perfect. Thank you.
So how many, how much? Does anybody know how much we get from that one? Just so I have in my mind what Sanica does this much.
Yeah, the the nameplate on that has moved around over the years, but I believe it's about 25 average we get.
It's 25 nameplates, 16, 17 average.
So I I know. So maybe some of like if a somebody decided to do a a solar farm, out, you know, by the airport, something like that, that may qualify as a sort of under three.
Oh, absolutely. And again, the size threshold in this specific situation shouldn't matter, but if they were to go to FERC and seek a qualified facility designation as a renewable resource, and then they wanted to sell that resource to us, we would be obligated to purchase their output. Though, again, we would calculate the value of their resource potentially along the same lines as our avoided costs that we have published. And any sort of term or tenor for that agreement, the other conditions associated with that would be subject to your approval.
Clarifications.
Right, moved by Carlson, second by Brown. Any other discussion? Not all in support, say aye. Aye passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 11, system development charge methodology.
Evening, President McCray, Commissioners, General Manager Lawson. We're here tonight to talk with you about water system development charges. And for the record, I'm Karen Kelly, Chief Operations Officer. With me tonight is Wally McCullough, Water Engineering Supervisor, Adam Rue, Rates Manager. And also on the screen behind you is our consultant, Deb Gialardi with Gialardi Rothstein Group. Deb has expertise in infrastructure finance and utility management, rate and fee setting and affordability, financial planning and public involvement related to these topics. She is our go to expert on SDCs throughout the water community. So glad to have you here. So right, just a brief agenda here. We're going to talk about a little bit on the history of SDCs in Oregon and EWEB. We'll talk about the methodology methodology changes that we're proposing, what the results show for different customer classes and the next steps. Following our presentation, we'll have time for question and answer. We'll be asking you though, for your feedback on these methodology changes. And if approved in general, we'll be asking you for agreement to provide public notice of these changes so that we can start the 90 day clock that moves towards approval, which includes a 60 day comment period. So just a little brief here on the history. So SDC Act started in Oregon in 1989 and it provided a uniform framework for the imposition of SDCs. This provides equitable funding for orderly, excuse me, infrastructure growth for development. Here at EWEB, our history started in 1996 when the board approved SDCs that went into effect in 1997. And those were based on meter size. In 2016, we provided a revised project list and enacted tiered rates for both base and higher elevations. And then in 2019, we combined the five eighths and three quarter meter sizes into a one, less than one inch meter size for a specific rate for that. And then we also provided a new calculation of SDC charges for accessory dwelling units, less than 800 square feet. If you remember a pushback then, I do about ADUs and trying to accommodate that as a growth type. So SDCs are important to us here at EWEB because they do help offset the cost of new development and recover a fair share of the costs of existing and planned infrastructure that provide capacity to serve new growth. That I'm going to hand it over to Wally.
Hey, Karen. Nice to be here to talk a little bit about something has to do with water. And I might talk a little bit about some of the projects that the SDCs offset the cost for. Overall, in the big picture, our water capital plan is really not geared toward system expansion or growth. And as such, there's relatively few projects that are actually included in the SDCs project list, which is included in the board background and kind of summarized on that screen on the the right side. And then on that table, you'll see kind of a category, and that's basically the driver between the majority of the the projects and kind of mirrors our capital plan. It's really replacement resiliency driven projects. But the majority of the ones on the list actually have a dual benefit of both a dual benefit of replacing existing capacity, also having a little bit of growth growth embedded in them, kind of a low allocation for excess capacity that can make them eligible for STCs. Now look at the list and divide it into three main areas. Say, one would be our kind of resiliency and optimization projects. That would include our new water treatment plant on the Willamette River. Redundant project, but it is providing an excess capacity and provide service to be future growth in the system. Have a couple of transmission projects are 23rd on Alder and our 42 inch base three transmission main. It's kind of a continuation of our riverfront connect. Both of these kind of inherit in them have excess capacity to meet future growth and demands in the system. The next phase area of products, I would say, would be all of our replacement projects. These are facilities, base level reservoirs, pump stations. Let's see on the list, a couple of our base level reservoirs on there, but we also have some upper level reservoirs. The Blama 975 pump station, CDB 1150 pump station. These are all kind of just replacement of existing facilities. But inherent with those replacements, there's well, they don't increase the overall capacity of the system to provide capacity for future growth and making them eligible for STCs. I see Deb nodding her head back there, which means I'm saying this right. So thank you. And lastly, would be our kind of our distribution projects are all of our main replacements. The easy one is our main water main improvements. These are all of our new subdivision works. So that's 100% growth eligible for STCs. Even on our normal main replacements, there's a certain percentage where we upsize the mains. This is, we have a lot of four and six inch pipe, burning standards, eight inch pipe, provides some excess capacity. That makes a delusible percentage of those improvements are eligible for STCs. Lastly, I just want to mention this when we're funding these projects through the SDCs, that could be done both in funding for offsetting some new construction costs and also providing that service on this. Turn it over to Adam.
For Deb. Yeah. Thanks, Wally. So in addition to updating the project list, the SDC update is an opportunity to look at how how you design the SDCs. So you've been talking about rate design a bit tonight and a progressive rate structure. What's being proposed for the SDCs is a progressive structure for single and unit and middle housing that's based on the size of the dwelling unit. For larger multifamily and non residential, so your general service category, it's still based on water meter size. But the 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 system impact of each meter size is based on the actual use of existing customers as opposed to a theoretical capacity factor that's actually, you know, the current SDCs are based on older meter standards and the the current modern meters are able to deliver higher capacity. And so we're seeing that too in the water use analysis. Next slide, please. So for residential, the single unit in the middle housing, this was really initiated to support affordability, particularly for smaller homes, thus the progressive nature of the structure. What we found in our 2022 SDC study that the state funded was that SDCs have a greater impact on smaller homes in terms of 8% of the development costs. And developers told us that going to a progressive going to a progressive structure would help incentivize building smaller homes. And that's particularly the case when it's not just one system. You know, SDCs can be charged for water, wastewater, parks and transportation. The city of Eugene initiated progressive rate structures for parks and local wastewater. And so looking to do this for water would make, have an impact in terms of on those smaller homes, making those more affordable for developers to construct. So the analysis is based on a regression analysis of 40,000 existing customers, EWEB customers, and that's how we developed the estimated impacts and related that back to square footage of the home. And so what's proposed is a four-tier progressive structure that mimics the city of Eugene's structure for wastewater and parks. And what it does is it provides a lower SDCs for the first two categories that are below the average unit size and then a progressively higher SDC for the larger homes. And as I mentioned, general service, still based on meter size, but recalibrating those factors and the base level of use to now reflect the fact that residential is no longer included. And the higher average water use for any given meter size relative to residential. So it starts with a, it's still a progressive based on meter size, but it starts at a higher level for the base meter size, reflecting the, the actual use or impact of those meters. And then as it goes, steps up with each meter size, it's a steeper incline, which is reflective of the actual use of those meters. And with that, I'll turn it over to Adam.
Thanks, Emily. So attached, or this slide is showing the results of the capital projects Wally mentioned and the new methodology changes that Deb, well, we're in her slides. Just for some context on this one, these are the four different usage ranges for residential. On the left, we should see the base on that small, less than one inch meter size. So the current is the same for all of these different dwelling unit sizes to propose. So it's a change in methodology that the square foot base. So as you can see, the smallest charge is actually a decrease from our current SDC charges. That increases for larger units. Change in methodology. Those being discussed. The bottom line on this chart shows the residential average. So that's kind of speaking to Wally's discussion of the projects and the overall increase this rate. Or this SDC charge hasn't been updated in about eight years. So that's the cumulative. We got some feedback from a prior fee update earlier this year. It was talking about phasing in, so. Next slide, the recommended task forward is for phasing in similar to the feedback we got from the earlier this year, the update. Showing for the two smaller units that were a decrease or a less significant increase phasing in in the first years with that. The updated charges. Nothing to affect the year one, but for the larger units that had a more impactful change from current. I don't know for three years since that proposal. This reflects year one, two and three, taking the total increase and dividing it by three. Going forward, we'd look to imply, apply CPI in those picture here too. So we can't get stuck on the same thing. I think the goal here is to come up to catch up for years of not updating to transition the approach and methodology. For residential, it's a more, or a slightly different change for the general service, which is based on. Capacity of the type also going out more impactful to the larger units. This one, we're recommending phasing in for all of the different types sizes. It's the base in for the three years, similar. This reflects the the full increase being based in equally over the three years. Include any inflationary. And just for some more context, this is a slide that I put together with some other local utilities or local areas that SDCs are personally context. So the current for the testing money size for EWEB.
Yeah. So that basically concludes the slides. Next steps are, we're attempting to initiate a public hearing this month, really right now if possible. But first we need your feedback on the proposed methodology changes. And then if you do have support for that, we would initiate that required public notice. Then we would come back to the board for adoption in December after we receive public comment. And then the SDCs would go into effect in February. So with that, we will open up Q and A.
Great. Thank you. I know Sonia has questions or comments and then Brown.
Generally, I appreciate the approach, the methodology, the progressive, the progressive approach. I like the gradualism that is proposed. I am curious a little bit about the scale, especially on those 240% increases. If we have a four inch size pipe that's being installed, what, what, what size of a building does that support? Is that, you know, is it, and is it only commercial or is it only that residential buildings with, you know, 100 units in it? If you can just give me a sense of the scale that that was supporting.
If anybody's familiar with the big new apartment complexes that are going out on the Loop Road, for example, one of those phases uses a four inch meter. If you're looking at a couple hundred of apartments, it's, it's a pretty good size project.
I guess when this comes back, maybe something that would be helpful is kind of on like an estimate of a per unit basis. Because looking at $180,000 versus $56,000, but if it's spread over, you know, 200 units, then maybe it's really in line with what, you know, we're supporting with one unit on the other cost size. I'm also curious, looking at the comparison slide where Springfield is, because they're our closest neighbor. And so I'm curious what their system development charges look like.
They're very similar to our new rates. They actually, we, we went to a tiered system similar to what the city of Eugene is doing for their parks and wastewater fees. They actually went to a per square foot basis, like $2 a square foot for their base level and $3 I believe for their upper level. And if you work that out with the numbers, it's right around the same, very similar to what Paris is.
And so we tried to match more of Eugene because that's what Eugene is doing instead of kind of looking regionally and saying, hey, let's just make it easy for contractors who work in the region to operate. Okay. All right, those are questions. Thank you.
Brown?
Thank you. And this is going to be hard sell for me. Go back to my old analogy of death by a thousand cuts. Here we go again, affordability. And regardless of the methodology, it's the results. These increases are astronomical. And it's, it's hard for me to grasp them. I mean, I don't care how you got there. I do care how you got there. And thank you for, for doing it. But why, just kind of go on Sonia's, why don't we have comparators like Springfield, Junction City, Cottage Grove, Salem, Corvallis, some of the other communities that I think are more comparable than Lake Osswee, or some of those. How come we don't have those comparisons?
Sure, we can get them. Deb, do you have any feedback on that? I, I have anecdotal feedback.
Yeah, I, you know, I provided what I had, which was, you know, more from further north. But certainly that information can be collected.
And then the percentage of increase is, and you say it's for capacity. It's increased capacity, but isn't water consumption going down? For capital?
Consumption is going. Say, yes, it's generally our water demands are going down. Or state level. And we'll be presenting that in our water master plan. But I think the, the message would be that the cost increases were not due to capacity or the growth. It's really related to the, and Deb could probably explain this more. It's the, the, the value of the capacity so much since the 2016 methodology update. That's the primary driver for the increase.
Yeah, I could add to that, Wally. You're absolutely right that the, for an average residential unit, the estimated use per dwelling unit did decrease some compared to when we did the study before. However, because you haven't kept, the costs haven't been kept current with the, you know, quite significant inflation that we've had since that time. And so they, just the cost per unit of consumption has gone up more, you know, clearly than the consumption for, on the residential side had decreased. So that was a, you know, so yes, there, we're still seeing that trend, but we also have eight years of inflation and so that's what's reflected in the residential. On non-residential, that is not the case. So the non-residential use per meter is actually higher when we look at non-residential exclusively and separate from residential. So really this is bringing the proposed structure and meter factors would be bringing non-residential or general service into better alignment with the actual use of those meters.
My last question, it's an example for, so you use Santa Clara placing it. What's its current capacity? Isn't it 10 or 15?
Santa Clara reservoir?
Yeah.
It's 20 million gallons.
Okay. And we're replacing it with five. So how can we use SDC fees and say that increases capacity if we're taking 20 million gallons out of service and placing with five, we're using SDC fees to cover that? How does that increase capacity?
I'm not sure that we are actually placing that with five.
Well, that's what I thought the slide said.
Did not.
Maybe I misread it.
Five million gallons. Oh, yeah. I think that's not been determined yet.
Wally, I can, I can add, I can add on this too. So under Oregon law, we can recover capacity costs from growth either from existing facilities or new facilities or a combination of the two. We just can't recover the same capacity. So it, through both components of the fee. So if you've got an existing reservoir that you're replacing, that's serving growth, we can recover those costs. We're just not going to include it in the reimbursement component. We're going to include it on the project list. So that's what we've done is any of those that while there is a reimbursement fee that's part of this updated methodology, it doesn't include any of the facility, the value of the facilities that are being replaced. We've included the growth share of those facilities in the improvement fee because it's much more expensive to replace a facility today than it was compared to what EWEB paid for it years and years ago.
Well, thank you. Maybe in the future, I'm not grasping it and tonight's probably not a good night for me to try and grasp it. But I'm, I'm confused about that, taking 20 million out, replacing it with five and the charge of SDCs. If I were building and developing, I would probably question that. But if you have an explanation, we'll find another time for you to explain it to me. Cause like I said, this is going to be a hard swell to take these rate increases.
Here.
Raski?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. So I worked on helping to develop the city's SDCs for transportation and sort of what. Input on that. And my take on this is just because the state says you can include the, include it in an SDC thing, in my view, doesn't mean you have to. You know? All along, when we've been talking about, I'll just take the second, second source plant. All along, we've been saying that we don't need that for capacity. We've got plenty of capacity at Hayden Bridge. Serve our needs. 50 years in, in the future, there's enough capacity at Hayden Bridge. That's resiliency. And so to put 21% of the cost of, of the new treatment plant, almost $17 million on this project list, I can't, I, I would, I'm going to make a motion to move that from, you know, if, if, if that's appropriate. I don't know if I'll get the votes, but the project list needs to be pared down to things that are actually increasing capacity. Now, yes, we have the ability to increase capacity with that new thing, but it's not being driven. That's being driven by resilience. Same with some of these, same with some of these other, other storage tanks, right? We can, we can use them under state statute. Put them into our SDC methodology. For me, that is not appropriate. Especially when we're looking at community that is having a hard time building new homes because of costs and bringing in new businesses because of costs. Like, like Commissioner Brown says, one thing on top of another, on top of another. Before you even put a shovel in the ground on a lot of projects in this community, you're into it for hundreds of thousands of dollars in SDCs and permit fees. And so as a commissioner on this board, I want to do everything I can to make sure that we're not trying to backfill our, our capital costs on the backs of, of new development and new houses. Okay. So to me, the way that that happens is by paring down the, the project list. In the city, it was parks and, and rec, or park, we'll take parks. We want to build this many parks. Great. I, I can build $200 million worth of parks and I could put it all on, you know, a good percentage of that on the developers. But you just, you're sweding so many people. As far as the, the progressive part of it, I, I agree that that's a great way to go. But if I've got a 1,500 square foot house and I've got a 1,500 square foot house, it's exponentially larger. So maybe the square foot methodology is better. And then the other question I had was, was, you talked about, you put up the, the thing about what our rates are now and that the 800 square foot one is going down. I thought we already did that when we, when we did SDUs. Didn't we have a lower rate for 800 and below? Why is it, why was it on that chart the same? Go back up. There you go. So 800, currently 800 square foot is 2276. But you said that three years ago, we, we did it incentivized one to lower that for ADUs, which are 800 square foot or less. Where is that? I think we, we changed it in 2019 where we could calculate 800. Do an estimate on 800 square feet or less. Well, we just, the lowest in the back might have more if he.
That was specifically for ADUs. So, so this is for any 800 square foot structure. The, the ADU special rate we came up with was just for an ADU. So just where you have a primary house and you're adding a unit. Part of that consideration there for an extra low rate is that of course you're, you're not adding. Part of that consideration there for an extra low rate is that, of course, you're you're not adding an irrigation. When you add A D U. In fact, you're probably eliminating some some irrigation. So that's why I qualified for an extra special rate.
So, yeah, I don't know where the, for me, I don't know where this, how this moves forward. Last motion I had to hold my nose. This one, I would stick my head in the sand before I would vote. Now, without some change.
Andy, now come to you. Is that work?
Just to be clear, you're not looking for a motion tonight. You're just you're just getting direction from us. Yeah. I just have a question. Is is part of the reason that these changes are so big? In addition to changing the methodology, is just that we haven't kept up with it over the years. So we're running into that same problem as we did. I can't remember what the last one was, but.
Yes. Yes, it's that combined effect here of the. Large capital escalation, cost escalation over eight years is the last time it was updated, combined with the kind of. More progressive rate design methodology, which is trade offs that I think that. And alluding to the earlier conversations. You know. If something goes down and something goes up somewhere. I know there's that tension and trade offs. Along with the overall cost.
So whatever direction we choose or whatever, whatever, whatever the the board ends up deciding to do, we have a mechanism in here. That it will go up regularly every year. So we're not faced with this again in like eight years, like, you know, we haven't kept.
That's the intent.
I just wanted to clarify that. So this year, we introduced this idea of collecting all of the fees to that single timing in the spring. S T Cs was a larger project, but going forward, the board should expect to see S T Cs with. After any sort of staged in increase, a routine. C P I increase every year to avoid us. To impart.
That's it.
Be frank.
So appreciate the, we asked for feedback and we're getting feedback. I I would, one thing that I would point out is. Some of this is an issue when you have a list of projects, who's going to pay for it? Who's going to pay for it? So if you think about, we have twenty five projects. And these are projects that are on the capital plan. The S T Cs are a mechanism to which the developers pay a portion of that. If the if the S T Cs are too low. The rate payers pay for it, the consumers pay for it. So this isn't an issue of. Of just, oh, this project belongs or not. If we're doing the project, it's a matter. Do developers pay for a portion related to capacity? And if not. And you still do the project, someone else pays for it. So S T Cs are a mechanism to help collect. Through a different mechanism for projects that we're doing. And some of this is on us. It was not a timely update. At a time when the value of capacity. Installed existing capacity and building new capacity has gone up dramatically. So you see. Not just methodology, but you see significant numbers. And so. Short of pulling projects off of a project list altogether. This is a mechanism by which the developer pays for a portion of that capital work. Versus the consumer. So it's a it's a dividing line. It's a mechanism.
Thank you. That was me. My question is really our conversation is how much of our capital projects do we want to fund? Through new development versus funding through rates, right? I mean, that's what we're we're pushing more of that capital cost to new developers. It go this route, right? I I'm looking at these and to me, these absolutely follow the concept of progressive rate design, right? We're looking at smaller homes have a smaller. Development charge. So it meets at least. The idea of trying to buffer smaller homes, which I'm just going to cautiously assume. Are probably not the wealthier families. I I don't know if that's a fair assumption. Correct me if I'm wrong there, but anyway, it feels like it meets that. I have two questions. We look at general service because that gets up to some really large sizes and really big bumps in cost. Are all general service? Like four inch lines? Are those all for multifamily? Or are those also serving like industrial uses and other uses? Is there a distinction between? Yeah, commercial, industrial and residential general service. I think I'm mixing words here that I'm just giving technical distinctions.
General service includes all residential for. For units and larger and industrial.
And industrial.
So there's. It would be the really very large apartment complexes would be branch and. Large industry.
So to the extent that we're trying to support the construction of housing in this in our community, because there is a. We've talked about, right? Big pressure to try and build more housing more affordably. Would it make sense for us to separate the general service that's feeding? Apartment buildings or condos compared to general service for commercial or industrial? Is that something we could do?
Looking to Deb, see if she has feedback from elsewhere on that.
We certainly can. The, yeah, we just have to tease that out of the data to. Be able to, you know, look at a sample of of multifamily. Relative to the meter size, separate from commercial and industrial. But, yeah, if if we can get the data to do that, we can certainly. Have two different subclasses of general service.
I think that would be worth considering, or at least as a, you know, for staff to. Tease out a little bit and see if that is something that would help us meet our housing development goals. And then the other question I have is I don't see an estimate here, and maybe it's because it's hard to do an estimate. Of the overall revenue that would come in through S T Cs from where we are today and what we would project the difference would be. With these with these changes. I don't have a sense. Is that ten million dollars? Is it a couple million dollars?
Your current budget's around eight hundred thousand. So be bumped to like a million.
To a million?
Yeah.
From eight hundred thousand. Twenty percent increase in S T Cs. So while these rates are, the the rates are bumping up significantly, the total revenue that we're talking about. Is it really two hundred thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, I think that's the ball.
Okay.
I can get back to you. That's.
That'd be helpful because it these numbers suggest that like we're, you know, pushing a whole bunch of extra costs onto new development. And what I think I heard you just say is maybe not so much. If it's just shifting a couple hundred thousand dollars. That would be useful to. To useful feedback. I mean, I can imagine that being possible, given. Your four inch line, there just may not be that many of those that happen each year. And so it's a huge jump in the total cost per project. But if. We're only doing one every four years, it's. Not really substantial in our shifting the cost to development. Those are my questions. You have another? Thanks.
Appreciate hearing all that and kind of having some time to think about those comments. And one of the. Thank you for saying the thing that I struggled to say earlier, which was, is there a distinction between? Commercial and the residential side? Because it was the exact same thought that I was having of. Is there a difference there? Because, you know, one, one thing, it's one thing to incentivize these smaller units. But then if you have a large commercial building that has smaller units in it, which in my perspective are actually more energy efficient, they use. Pure resources and less land, and you can get more people into a smaller space and more affordably. Then we should incentivize those. And so to the extent that we're progressive in that particular category, I'm far more nervous about that. Is it? That's, we need lots more of those projects. I know everybody's big A D U, but they're so much less energy efficient than what an apartment complex could be. Bit more people to. That's one concern I have. I do, you know, the more I've thought about it, since you've talked about the square foot. I am very curious what that. You know, kind of possibility would look like and to the extent that we could do something with. A C P I adjuster and even spread the. The cost out even further. I mean, if we haven't touched this in eight years. Could we have even more gradualism than just a three year time cycle on that to? Mitigate some of that impact. And then, yeah, I also think it would be helpful to know what portion, like, how much are we raising and how much are we putting on rate pairs versus? New development? That would also.
Most of great peers.
Okay, thanks.
Frank?
Yeah, just one more piece of context. Just just because a project is eligible to receive S T C funds, doesn't mean we fully fund it. In fact, if you think about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Versus the size of our capital plan, it is mostly on the backs of rate payers already. I don't exactly know the percentage, but we.
So then in the chart that's in the in the appendix. Where it says that the new treatment plant, twenty one percent of it is eligible for S T Cs, and there's a seventeen million dollar charge to that. You're, we're planning on funding seventeen million dollars for the new plant with S T Cs.
So currently, we're generating closer to a million is about what we expect in S T Cs. A year, but seventeen million of that would be eligible. But in order to fund that, we would have had to have collected. And historically, we have not collected as much in S T Cs. As we are permitted to fund or are eligible for S T C funding.
So so the answer is no, we're not spending seventeen million.
But but the methodology that is being proposed to us. Would. There's fifty eight million dollars worth of of eligible or fifty eight million dollars. It's twenty percent of the of the project list that is eligible for S T Cs. And by raising these S T Cs. Trying to, we're trying to get to fifty eight million dollars. Through S T Cs. This is twenty percent of the capital cost. Is that, am I wrong in that?
That's correct. That is the the improvement fee portion of the S T C. And I think the part of the point is that the, you know, that's spread over. The planning period here, which is basically build out and that twenty one percent represents the future growth share of that future. Capacity and because everybody benefits from that redundancy and resiliency. And the S T Cs will trickle in over time, and so they could be used to pay off debt. Once the facilities are constructed, that becomes kind of reimbursement that can be used to fund other things. But for purposes of establishing the S T C. That amount is what is calculated as the growth related share.
Right. So so the way that I understand S T Cs is you have a project list. Which here comes to two hundred ninety two million dollars. You figure what what percentage of that is eligible for? System development charge reimbursements from new capacity. Take the two hundred eighty million. Twenty percent of it is fifty eight million. Okay. In in twenty years, I need to raise raise fifty eight million dollars to get to that. I have to charge these prices. Those are the prices right there that we have to charge to get to fifty eight million dollars worth of S T Cs. Is that, am I, am I wrong in this?
No, that's correct.
If we build out to the, if we use all the excess capacity gets used, so that's the assumption that's being, all of the excess capacity gets used.
But the rates are based on. Trying to raise fifty eight million dollars. So so when I go and build a project today. I'm trying, my rate is based on trying to get fifty eight million dollars over twenty years. Whether we get to fifty eight million dollars, we don't know that. But the rate I'm paying is based on the assumption that we're going to spend fifty eight million dollars on new capacity.
Right.
Over twenty years.
Over how long it takes.
Here gets a twenty year plan.
Three million dollars a year. Now we're.
Because we're not growing at a speed to meet the capacity. So that's being.
I mean, I mean, in terms of, in terms of what you have to say.
Yes, yes.
So. I'll come to you, but first I'm going to ask the team. What you need from us to. Take the next step, whatever that looks.
We we need to come back to you with the items that you've asked for. Have another discussion.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I'm just curious. I mean, given your explanation, which thank you, that made it a lot more clear to me on how it was funded. Because I was, I was not clear that it was exactly tied to it in the twenty percent. So for me. I I think that it's maybe too high. Especially initially for doing. I'm curious if others have that because that might be about a valuable. A valuable piece of feedback for you all to take. If we're looking at twenty percent. We either take the project list down or we say it's not twenty percent. And I'm curious if there's interest from others in saying. We need that total pie that we're trying to fill to be. Or if we're still.
I think that's a good question. I'm going to note that we're at time on this topic, but. So happy, maybe we just do one more round. Would that be useful? And then we'll, we're expecting another conversation with you. Next month or the following. So one more round.
I guess I just don't have a clear sense of how many of these. General service four inch projects we do like on average a year and. Overall, like, how much does a project like that cost, right? So if it costs like millions of dollars. These numbers that were that were that you're putting forth sound like a lot of money, but what's the scale of a project like that? So I just need a little bit more context. I think that would be helpful. Me and like, what are most of our, like, where do most of our S D C? Like what, what? Here, what category? That would just be some helpful.
Rowski?
Yeah. Yeah, that's. Those were my questions that I was gonna have. What what percentage are we looking at on these? The second thing is, I I totally agree with Sonia as far as a a longer phasing of this. And we're jumping into, we're trying to, we're trying to build for twenty years out and fund it at year three. So we've got twenty years to do this and we can come back with the methodology again if we find out, well, we're we're really. Falling behind here. But what I think with the C P I. And the longer, a longer. We have up on this, it might make it a little bit more palatable. That's like I said, we're. We're funding projects in the future. We're looking at being able to service debt with this. This fifty eight million dollars doesn't include the cost of the the extra cost of the debt, I don't believe. So for for servicing that on on the. Second treatment plan, it's eighty four million dollar. Thing, does that include the debt cost or not? The eighty four million on the second. We don't know because we haven't decided how we're going to fund it yet.
That would have to confirm.
But yeah.
That's the capital cost. I don't believe that is carrying costs.
So for me. Making it more gradual. In the square footage. Be something as well if that's if that's feasible. I know it's tied right down to City of the Jeans, but it doesn't have to.
Thank you.
Ron? And I'd like to some more information too. The only thing that makes any economic sense for the subsidized projects right now, homes for good. And we waive those S T C fees. So who eats those? I mean, how, I mean, when we do these big projects, I know a lot of the subsidized projects that get the S T C fees waived. And so is that put that on? In fifteen hundred square foot and two bedrooms at home? Or I mean, who's paying for those S T Cs? Because there's. Yeah, so a lot of conventional financing going on.
Was waived, it would just be not offsetting the overall revenue.
If if there's a capacity that's being stoned by a project. And that capacity requires capital funding and you're not getting the funding from the traditional source. Pays for it, rate pairs. They fail.
Okay. Going to a different.
Yeah, actually, I just want to make that point that that in the future, as we go forward, trying to finance traditional projects, sort of the campus projects is almost non existent. So it's. a lot more frequency of SDCPs being waived.
Frank, and then.
So just to be clear, we cannot waive SDC fees. In years where we have good financial performance, we can issue a grant in lieu of of that. But legally, we can't waive this.
You just take it from one account and put it together.
Right.
I guess that's all done. Thank you for the.
Appreciate the feedback. We'll also get more on the other other local competitors for you, too. Thank you.
When do you think you'll initiate the public hearing? I mean, is that starting? Are we just gonna start that process? Because that was one of those slides that you said.
Don't think we're ready.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all you got, John?
Hey, I'm sorry. You guys are pushing my buttons tonight.
Sorry, Cole. Hey, um, got a proposal to do a break now and take 10 minutes. Is that okay with you, Brian?
I support.
All right, okay with the rest of the board? Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute break and be back at 10 after. 2024 of the Eugene Water Electric Report. Mr. Booth, I think we're going to hear from you.
I don't.
Welcome to the front.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brian Booth back up here. This is the annual resource update or state of resource planning that you have is in the region. First off, I do want to give a whole boat load of thanks on this one. This is one of those presentations where I get to do all the presenting of other people's very hard work. I name a few names that would not fit in the margin on this one. Ben Ulrich, Aaron Bush, John Crager, folks on the ERS team. Juan, who's quarterbacking the response potential assessment. Also, Daniel Davidson and Marciano Rosales, the load forecast, and Eli Boland for the transmission work. And frankly, more people who I'm not pulling from memory. Let's go ahead and jump into it. An overview of what we're going to talk about tonight. The regional outlook for electricity demand, generation, and transmission. The UW, local labor, demand trajectory. We'll do the action plan update. What's new since our last IOP? We'll look at the potential assessments, modeling tool development and improvements. I will touch on the resource acquisition strategy and execution and nerd out a little bit on the 2025 energy resource study. So let's jump right into it, the regional outlook. I things are growing. There's a lot on this graph. Let me go ahead and walk through it. We've got three different colors and each of which has three different lines. The green line is the annual energy forecast. The solid one being this year's regional energy forecast. The dashed one being last year's regional energy forecast. And the extruded dashed one being the 2022 regional energy forecast. Above that, we have the summer peaks in orange and the winter peaks in blue. This comes from our friends at Pinoch who presented last year. That's Crystal Ball and her team. They take away on this is that expected low growth in the region is it's up. It is growing. It is up substantially from last year, and last year was up substantially from the year before that. Between electrification, between data center load growth, there is a many, many gigawatts of expected new consumption in the Northwest. On the flip side of that, expectations for new generation coming online are similarly up. Stack graph lays out all the different types of generation by nameplate and color from the bottom up. We have expected wind generation, solar PV, offshore wind showing up in the next decade. On top of that, we have other renewables, renewables for storage, which is typically battery storage in red, storage by itself, and in gray, traditional peaking capacity. The two lines on this are the prior year's expected resource growth trajectories. There we go, I can enunciate. Like the load forecasts, the generation forecast is also up from last year to meet those projected loads. And last year's was up from the forecast before that. So transmission, I here's the fun part. We could go ahead and build these things by connecting them and getting electrons from point A to point B. It's a well, maybe even more of a challenge now than it is to build the generation. I there are three queues in the Bonneville system. The first is line load interconnection. That is, hey, I've got a load. I want to put it here. Can I get service? Second queue is transmission service requests. That is, you come in, you got a point of delivery, you've got a point of receipt. Hey, Bonneville, can I get transmission from point A to point C? As point A to point B. So Pacific Corps, for example, I want to put a wind project here. Hey, Bonneville, I want to deliver the power from that wind project to my service territory. Can you wheel it across your system? The third queue is the generation in an interconnection. Small generators, less than 20 megawatts, and large, over 20 megawatts. I those are similar to the line of load, but with generation. Hey, Bonneville, I want to drop a generator here. Can you serve? The growth on this is pretty substantial. On the line and loading connection requests, we've seen it grow from about a gigawatt request back in 2017 to more like eight gigawatts in 2023. That is a lot more. And in terms of transmission capacity, that's several 500 NBA lines. On the transmission service requests, there's two things going on here. We have study requests in orange and the queue in blue, which is things that are in the queue and studies have not yet been initiated for. These numbers are getting even bigger. So here we've got well, many, many tens of gigawatts of new TSRs that are in the queue. And the studies are very slowly working through that. The third one, I save the best for last is to just astronomically large numbers. These are the generation requests, total gigawatts that are being requested per year, going from a couple gigawatts back in 2017 up to north of 100 gigawatts of new generation interconnection requests in 2023. And a little bit of nuance to this. We have reasons to think that the generation and interconnection queue is being banned, for lack of a better term, with projects that we'd like to build and are going out of their way to get into the queue in the hopes that they can make it through. That said, there are almost certainly many tens of gigawatts of real time for this. We've been told anecdotally, the wait time for a large generation, large generator air connection is something like 10 years right now. On the flip side of this, transmission execution. Here we have a Pacific Northwest transmission buildout. How many miles of 500 KVA TV circuit have been built by decade? Whole bunch of the existing system was built out back in the good old days when things like permits were pretty easy to come by. So starting out at twenty six hundred miles of transmission line back in the sixties and then declining over time down to one whole mile of transmission thus far in the twenty twenties. So the takeaway here. The takeaway here is that the demand for transmission is going up exponentially. And yet our track record for building it has certainly gone down exponentially. I don't want to be like too down on Bonneville for this. As you know, Bonneville is expecting substantial rate increases. Particularly on their transmission side in order to go out and meet this increased growth. They are doubling their capital improvement plan. I frankly think they'll need to double it several more times to be able to meet the new loads and generators that are looking to interconnect here in the Northwest. Yeah, they are working on it, but to be able to work through this queue, it is going to take a long time. All right. So on a lighter note, let's flip over to the local EWEB load trajectory. Here again, we have two sets of two lines. We have EWEB's load and average megawatts in blue. This is with our baseline conservation assumptions. And then we have that same load growth, like rows of energy efficiency in the dashed line right above that. Line up in orange is our peak loud, peak load hour forecast, peak hour load forecast. Again, the solid line being with conservation and managed charging. That's a new one in that top part. And the dashed line being without conservation and managed charging. So the takeaway there being I manage charging and conservation being worth something like a hundred megawatts of on-peak savings to us. One more line to put on this. I, in gray, we have our tier one Bonneville allocation. This thing's gonna squiggle around by a couple of megawatts over the next few years. Well, it gets finalized. This is our best guess at the moment. Key here is that EWEB has for the last fifteen years, I've pretty successfully met all of our load growth with energy efficiency. We do not project that we're going to be able to do that forever. And in fact, an inflection point is going to occur sometime in the next several years, around twenty twenty eight. When our load growth starts to outpace our ability to achieve energy efficiency. So looking out in the future. This gap difference between our load forecast and our Bonneville tier one allocation. That is the problem that the energy resource study sets out to solve, at least cost way possible. So let's dive in for just a second on load fundamentals here. Here we've got a scatter plot every day for the last five years. I, on the X axis, we have our average daily temperature. And on the Y axis, we have our average load for the day. So this dot right here represents a day where we had hundred and seventy average megawatts of load. The average temperature was something like fifty two, fifty three degrees. Now there's a trend here, and this is information that we use in our load forecast every day. And if I were to draw a trend line through that data, it would look something like that. But I did just draw a trend line. That's not mathematical. Don't pull this to it. The key takeaway here is that our loads tend to bottom out right around sixty degrees. And then when it's warmer than sixty, air conditioning starts to kick in and our load slowly rises. And when it's colder than sixty. Heating starts to kick in and our load similarly rises. Looking into my crystal ball. We think that this curve could become or curved in the future. We know that we're going to have additional base load consumption. We think electric vehicles here in Eugene will continue to grow at the one I'm looking your way. It's like a forty percent annual growth rate we see in EVs these days. So we do expect to sell more and more power period. At the same time, with electrification heat, heat pumps. Expect to have somewhat more sales here on the heating end and also significantly more sales on the so more heat pumps, more air conditioning, anything more hot days. We do expect to have more summer cooling load. All right. This one. It's a lot of lines to look at. Bear with me for just a second. This is the official forecast of what that looks like. So our peak hour megawatts by month across the X axis and separate lines for every five years after the coming decades. The key takeaway from this is that the spread between these lines gets bigger and bigger and bigger, particularly in the summer. So that is all of that additional summer load that we expect to have. At the same time, our power supply resources, our well, portfolio is getting smaller. This is somewhat deliberate. With the last BPA contract, my predecessor in the team set out and acquired contracts to serve our load through our current BPA contract. So we have our CR Pacific and State Line Wind, our purchase agreements expiring in twenty seven, Klondike expiring in twenty eight. When the BPA contract rolls over, the same year the IP co-generation expires. I should say the JWA, the joint operating arrangement for that expires, but of course the asset will still be there. So they'll be entering into negotiations on how we might extend that contract, but it's certainly not a given. A load forecast during this period is a lifeline. Right now, we're in a pretty good place. The market is frankly smoking hot and we've got extra power to sell and we are, I'm happy to say, making some money by selling wholesale power. That said, our position in the next few years will change as these contracts roll off. And we find ourselves potentially in a position of having replaced them. All right. We did not take an intermission or break, so we can take a second to ask if there's any interim questions. Because next is gonna be moving on to the problem solving piece of this rather than the, the problem measuring and your monitoring of it.
Great, thanks. Any questions? Off ski. I have just a couple really quick. The geography of the region when like for the first couple of graphs that is Pacific Northwest generally is that, is it the Pacific Northwest Power Pool? Is that the geography we're looking at?
The BPA footprint, it would be first Columbia, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, corners of Wyoming, Northern California.
Okay, thanks. And then when you referenced managed charging, that's just EPs.
That's correct.
Okay. And then what's the assumption about building electrification as we're looking at that? I know we have an electrification study that has a couple scenarios we could point at.
This was the modest electrification study we're using as our baseline right now. So that is significant number of electric vehicles and some additional heat pumps. I do think potential for additional internal load and could be lower and we're recognizing that in the base forecast. Sorry, we're not recognizing that in the base forecast now.
Thanks. Right. That was a quick break.
No time. Yeah. All right. So let's jump onto the action plan of the twenty twenty five ERS update. I so some IRP action plan key deliverables. We've got the demand side potential assessment, which includes a look at electrification, energy efficiency, demand response. And when I left off this list, solar. We are looking at modeling tool development and improvements, rate design and pricing roadmap. More to come on that one. We're also looking at a resource acquisition strategy. We're working on our bundle, our contracts. Maybe sometimes too much, it seems, leaving Megan and Aaron's way. Our IP contract, we recently extended to go through the end of twenty twenty eights. We've just had initial talks with Sierra Pacific. Of course, we have these miscellaneous wind contracts that are rolling off. We have I always hope the potential that partner with you of their generation. Other things that are just in the hopper. Is not lost on me that my personal goals for the year very closely mirror the things on this list. So Frank, I would like to say that they're mostly on time and at least coming soon. So first off, the demand side potential assessment, the DSPA. It draws from both regional and local data sources to estimate the potential for electrification, energy efficiency, demand response. Such as smart rates and rooftop solar. We have our vendor in the door. That's Lighthouse Energy Consulting. Ted Light is the guy's name. So Lighthouse. Yeah, Ted's great. We're feeling great about him and we're getting to work on that. I, EWEB staff, we have been able, shout out to our IS folks. We haven't able to link our regional land information database at Wayne County. That is our lid. I data with EWEB's customer information system. So from that, all the things that the county assessor knows, we can link up with the house. So if a house is three thousand square feet or fifteen hundred square feet, it has a permit for an electric heating system versus the gas heating system. Is it single family home? Is it multi-family? All of these pieces, we are now able to tie it to the customer level. Which is so cool. I, also, we now have EV registration data at the transform level. So from the state, nice job one. We now have a number of electric vehicles and plug-in hybrids and where they are located. The schedule for this, we have a couple of phases with this information coming in with the conservation potential assessment expected in December. Demand response shortly after that. And then the electrification solo potentials coming in next March. So I couldn't help but share the graph of the electric vehicle map here. I, bigger dots mean more EVs, smaller dots mean fewer EVs, red is full-on electric vehicles and yellow is plug-in hybrids. Not only is this a super cool like situation report for what's going on in Eugene now, but we can use the same information tie it to what we know about the customer in order to predict who is more likely, who is most likely to get electric vehicles in the future. So we can take this data and say, for example, someone with a single family home and electric heat is probably six times more likely to buy an EV than someone with an apartment. Okay. And where are all those single family homes with electric heat? Let's put them on the feeder. Let's then project where we're going to have additional EV growth service territory. So we can then serve that in the most efficient way possible going forward. All right. Juan ends every single one of his presentations with a par side cartoon. So I had to give a little tribute to Juan since this is really all of his work. I, also it has Frank's name in it. So it's checking two boxes. And the third, certainly the first part of this presentation was a little scary. So sorry about that. We are working to solve the problem. All right. So one of those other things we're using to solve the problem is that BPA contract. Y'all saw this last month. We're looking at a menu of different BPA contracts that offer different things to us. From the bottom up, the blue parts are the BPA portion that would be served under any of these contract options. Like with sliced block, block shaping or block only or load following. Well, the gray portion is something that we would need to serve ourselves. Now, as with everything, you get what you pay for. So something like load following where BPA just meets it all, that is the platinum service. That is the undercoating. That is the leather upholstery. We need to make a value proposition on whether that's worth it to us. So in order to fill those gaps, here we have the Denny's menu of supply side resources that are available to us. We have added a couple of new ones that I wanted to point out. So from last year, we are looking at offshore wind. We have added geothermal generation. Some familiar faces from last year, traditional local wind, local solar, east side solar. SMRs, traditional gas picker with the optional sequestration. I, the six dollar eggs in the basket, well, about very popular to customers. It's not on the menu. Battery storage. It's another big. Another note on these is that there has been very substantial inflation in these prices since the twenty twenty three IRP. Cost of copper is way up. Cost of labor is way up. Plus or minus fifty percent inflation across the board on this. Not all resources are that bad. I'm told the battery storage is, is not that bad. But others are somewhat worse. All right. So as with everything. The devil is in the details on these. It's not like we're just going out and buying megawatts and all megawatts are the same and we just write somebody a check and the power shows up for us. Let's take a look at what the details on one of these types of resources look like. I, this one is an example of Columbia River Gorge Wind, wind project that we happen to have access to the production data on. And here we draft out a frequency chart. We're on the X axis. We have the percentage of nameplate that's being generated in any given hour. And on the Y axis, we have the frequency that's percentage of the hours in which that nameplate was being generated. So let me translate this. For this particular project, it generated one hundred percent of its nameplates, like point two percent of the time. Now. Going backwards. The average generation of this project was twenty five percent of nameplate. Sixty three percent of the time, I, it was below the median. Fifty percent of the time, it was below twelve percent of the complete. And of course, you know, the, the mode for this data set, the most popular outcome was a generation of zero. Now, this is not meant to be a knock on wind power. Certainly it produces some electricity and when it does, it pushes fossil fuels out of the system. It is meant to demonstrate the gorge wind. You really can't count on it during critical hours. Now fortunately, the very smart people at the Power Pool are also aware of this and have been doing hard math for us to help us figure out exactly which types of wind can be counted on during cold months. So zone one over here, that's where gorge wind is located. They have indicated the qualifying sneak contribution. That's QCC. There's own wind in January is five point six percent of nameplate. And it tends to stay in those kind of single digits of the March for most of the winter. Good news is outside of zone one, wind can be pretty good. Looking at zone two, three, four, we're seeing contributions, QCC contributions in very strong double-digit percentages. So things like Wyoming and Montana wind, they're quite attractive. It gets us back to that transmission problem we talked about earlier, but certainly if we could drop one of these in and get it here, that'd be a nice resource to have. All right. So solving the puzzle. For those of you who don't daily enjoy optimization engines, it can feel a little bit like a Roob Goldberg machine like this. Self-operating napkin. I assure you, it does feel a little bit like that to us too, but not this bad. I, it is really setting up to achieve, you know, fairly simple things. It's just a whole bunch of numbers and information that has to go into it so we can model it. Let me talk about a portfolio building and how the model thinks about measuring and choosing a portfolio. I, here we have a financial portfolio example. Where we have two investment types. Bonds in the bottom left and stocks in the top right. Now, based on this data set, which is nineteen seventy seven to two thousand and eleven, let me say I'm not a certified financial advisor and past performance does not guarantee future returns. All right. Now I can actually talk about this. Based on this data set, we can see the performance of different combinations of stocks and bonds. So if you had a portfolio of a hundred percent bonds, it would have yielded a rate of return of nine percent. And had a standard deviation, their measurement of risk of also just about nine percent. If you had a portfolio of a hundred percent stocks, you would have seen a better rate of return around twelve and a half percent. But of course, a higher risk level, a higher standard deviation of more like seventeen percent. Now, the numbers are interesting, but like the trend here shouldn't surprise anybody. Like the stock market goes up and up and up. Over time, it produces better rates of return than bonds over a long enough timeline. Well, bonds tend to be lower performance, but also safer. Now, on this line, we have every combination of stocks and bonds you can choose from. Now, what's interesting about this is not that a portfolio that's high in stocks produces more returns than a portfolio that's low in stocks. But that there's a curve in this. This curve right here. There's a funny thing that happens in the market where when the markets tanks. People tend to flee stocks and buy bonds for safety. This then drives up the price of the bonds. So there is this thing that hap- So there is this thing that happens, an interaction between the two. Uh, where they hedge against each other to get this power of diversification. So in this case, had our investor chosen a portfolio that actually had more stocks on it. They could have increased their rate of return while also reducing their risk. So counterintuitively, buying a portfolio of only bonds was not the least risk thing they could have chosen. And they could have gotten essentially free returns by increasing their allocation of stocks. We're doing very, very similar math with electricity. Only it's not just two products that we're basing against each other, it's a whole bunch. But this is six-sided shape. We've got six different resources on here. Um, the portfolio that we would recommend to you. Like over there is probably not going to be, if we go in a hundred percent on any one thing. We will likely not come back to a portfolio, come back to you with portfolio. It says, hey, buy only gorge wind or buy only local solar, only batteries. There is going to be diversification benefits between these resources. And I would hope we'd land on a portfolio that comes out somewhere here in the middle, something that diversifies risk, also serving our needs. Alright, so that computer, uh, one of our goals of the year, of course, was to uh up our game on the computing side. Uh, this is the dashboard for Aurora. I. Yeah, there's a lot going on here. We brought in uh one of the smartest people we know and the whole mouse to guess uh PhD from Tacoma Power to help us get upgraded. And upgraded, we did. So we spent several months with her uh improving our Aurora skills, building out our model so that it could be faster, stronger, more robust. Jumped all buildings in a single bound, that kind of thing. In addition to getting upgraded on Aurora, we've gone out and gotten skills and complementary models. Uh, the team has gone out, met with other planning teams around the region to find out what software packages they use. And have gotten trained up in that. The team is, in addition to getting better Aurora. That's gone out and gotten trained in what's best, which we were using, uh, at risk, which is excellent and intuitive for Monte Carlo like risk measurements. And also our in-house BPA product class. Um, all these put together kind of in the beta testing stage here, so I was warned not to overpromise. Uh, but certainly our beta testing is very, very impressive at the moment. And the models that used to take us a week to run are now taking minutes. By being able to run this thing in minutes, we can really answer questions. So if I ask, hey, what if we did that? If Frank asks, hey, what if we did this? Theoretically, we can answer that on the field and do real-time tweaking. To be able to answer this thing the best way possible. Alright, so wrapping this up on the timeline side. Uh, we will be back uh in December with initial results of BPA product analysis. Quantitative analysis, a piece of this, so some little graph numbers. Uh, we are launching the community table engagement uh next month, October fourth, I believe. Um. Following that, we'll be back with the results of the BPA product analysis in February. And we'll be bringing recommendations to you in people. For decision, if you plan adoption in June, is a signed contract next December. Alright, so I just uploaded everything that keeps me up at night to you last twenty-five minutes. Any questions? Yeah.
Wow, that's really exciting. I mean, it was scary, but then I had hope. So thank you. Um. I, I am curious because, you know, there's a certain amount that's under our control and then there's this. Giant elephant in the room of what else is happening that's completely outside of our control. Giant. Storage, data storage places, they're going up and consuming all the power. That, that's really scary to me and we don't have any control over that. The other side of that is, you know, we do have some data so we can monitor it. I appreciate that you're taking the risk management approach. Have all this new software to help run. Things. I'm curious, in all of that, I'm, I'm assuming it does, but. Does it look, does the system look at the um ability of a resource to generate? Just using historical data or is it looking at, okay, who projects that Oregon is going to look a lot more like Oregon California? Did in the twenty years, like, does it incorporate that as well?
Yes, uh, we are incorporating climate change uh predictions into our load forecast. Um, as with everything, there's always one for everyone. We don't know exactly how that will impact hydro production. We don't know exactly how that will impact wind production. The models were all over the place. I've seen some that say, hey, this is going to look like San Diego in twenty years, which doesn't sound that bad. Um, and others that say it'll be more like Central America and we'll get twenty inches of rain. Just great for hydro production, bad for solar and really bad for our happiness in general.
Okay, wow, that's also fascinating range options in four years. I mean, that's so hard to predict and also. I'm assuming that Monte Carlo thing has some element of. Guessing what others do versus what we do because they are intertwined no matter what.
Yeah, so that is, uh, that is Aurora's skill. Aurora is the price forecasting software. And it's, it essentially builds like the most cost-effective system for the West Coast. And then we can use the interactions between all the generations and gets built to predict the price of power going. So that is our, our price for the gas model. It's trying to figure out all that uh interconnectedness.
And there's not like a, it's not like the stock market necessarily where there is a feedback loop. Somewhat real time or, or do you think of the pricing mechanism as somewhat like the stock market in terms of future feedback contracts out?
It feels similar but separate to me. They already cost discussion earlier. You probably could have gotten a pile of it, but that, there's so much hurting us behind it. Um, but the takeaway from that is that uh Aurora is forecasting market. So if we were to build like a system for the West Coast, what should the price of power be? What we're seeing in market boards right now is very different. We're seeing frankly a fear-dominated market. Prices that don't make any fundamental sense. It is the cost of getting power. It is the cost of getting certainty. It is driving the market right now.
Okay, and then a couple of uh dates of the community table is, are those events that we're having? Other people being involved with, because if they are, I'd love to have this.
Yes, and I believe there's been some discussion around uh. How we can have board members there. Of course, if there's three or more of you, that makes things complicated. So there will be more to come on that.
Okay, great. Alright, and then um. And I say this a little bit in jest, but I'm gonna throw it out there. I'm very curious with these giant data centers. I mean, what is the cost of a cat video? Is that literally what they're storing? It's just videos of random stuff and it's eating up all the electricity? Or are there bigger things at play that are, are taking off as fast as?
Yeah, I, I would say the cloud computing in general, uh, while cat videos do dominate an unfortunate percentage of the internet. Uh, all things cloud computing goes to data centers. Every time we pick up our phone, every time we touch our computer. The websites that are being ran that we're interacting with. Data centers are doing that process. I probably read in the news about AI data centers.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, AI, it's a big future piece of that.
Okay.
And Bitcoins. Yes, Bitcoin mining being a big one too. I have all kinds of color commentary on the uh. Benefits of Bitcoin and how it's a great use of society's resources, but I'll save that for another day.
But. Yeah, I was, one thing that um was not on Brian's calendar that's, uh, we have a work session in October. And part of the work session in October is to um talk to the board. Somewhat about the uh, um, the business model piece of the electric side, but a lot of it around the qualitative trade-offs in a portfolio. And some of that gets back to your concern, Commissioner Carlson, which is there's this piece of the region that is kind of not within E web's purview. But we are subject uh to the grid and its vulnerabilities and its strengths and we can leverage that. Um, but we also want to have a discussion with the board around trade-offs between flexibility and capacity. And do you want to manage risk or in this way, or do you want to look at a different kind of qualitative trade-off? So that, that's in October and that definitely feeds into how you might approach. Something where you feel there's a vulnerability and how much do you want to mitigate that? Versus pay for that, right? There's, there's going to be trade-offs there. So um, that's in Oc- that's coming in October.
Mindy?
That was actually. That is.
Thank you.
Very, very clear. Um, my main question really is around the community table engagement. What, what is that going to look like? Are we asking people for what they want? Were we fearing this?
Both. So we are educating and asking for feedback on community values, things like those qualitative discussions. Um. There are pieces in qualitative analysis, just to name a few, like how much do we value local fall versus just. And in the case to be gay and asking them to deal with it. How much do we value uh sustainability? There's a difference between ninety-five percent carbon-free portfolio and the ninety-nine or a hundred percent. I'm pretty comfortable with doing math and I'm much less comfortable with telling the community like what their values are. Well, this is a nice opportunity to hear from some of our uh more interesting community.
And how will we? Really be ones. Oh, and so I guess I'm just, maybe that process has a good, yeah, but I'm just curious about that.
It is very much a work in process. Um. The intent is to bring back report on the community table. I would imagine stages of reports as we would keep that community table process and get back to the timeline. Keep it going really for a year long, so through next October. Brown and then Bronks.
Yeah, um, I, I concur with Mindy's comment. It's a very good presentation. Um, the community table engagement is not going to be obligatory on us, but I don't want us to get set up to say that we didn't follow their foundations, things such as that.
Can I weigh in on that, Commissioner? Yeah, the, the, this is not an advisory board. Um, the community table, an advisory board generally comes back with some sort of consensus opinion. This is. This is a working group that we wanted to establish to be able to get a variety of opinions on. Um, including some that, that this board has said is important from an equity and inclusive perspective. So it's. It's primarily around staff wanting to gather differences of opinions um that we might historically have not, but it's not. Obligatory on the board at, at all. Our intent is to use this to provide information back to the board on what we've heard from a variety of sources.
And so um I noticed he had some fossil fuel resource options in there like you have. Um, so I would guess that's still on play, but more importantly to me is how are you going to evaluate the. Environmental impacts of certain resources, like offshore wind with the whale migrations or. West side solar and taking production plant out of, you know, out of agricultural use and things like that. How are you going to measure that and what's going to be most important? Or is that our, our gardens?
I think that. Some of the things you mentioned are difficult to measure and those come down to a qualitative decision. Um. The environmental portion of this analysis, we of course have our ninety-five percent carbon-free goal. All portfolios will be compliant with ninety-five percent carbon-free. We also have a societal cost of carbon contribution. So if it were to say, hey, bolts and gas, it would be because that was dramatically less expensive than the alternatives. And, but still, well, in that ninety-five percent carbon, yeah.
Yeah, I get that. I'm, I'm looking at the impact on the environment of, of long-term. I mean, creating offshore, there's pros and there's cons. Same thing with solar farms on agricultural land and each one of those has a environmental cost. Yeah, and, and some to some people may be greater than to others. And how are we as a group going to evaluate that or view? However, that ends up.
So that is a great question. I wish I had a great answer for you. I think the reality on some of those is that it's very hard to measure. I couldn't tell you the, the dollar impact of building. Certainly, there's lots of neighbors who don't like what the winter is. And I don't know how to put a price on it. There is some consumption of farmland. And it's uh, it's gotta be outside of the scope of the math on this one until we figure out a way to measure that.
I'll just say some of that'll start qualitatively and, you know, we'll, we'll look and, and, you know, you hear even public testimony this evening. Um, we have to be really careful with the terms that we use and someone referenced nuclear and said, well, nuclear is not clean. No, it's not clean. It's, we have to be careful not to call nuclear clean, for example, because it does have environmental impacts. So does wind. It can be carbon-free or it can be low-carbon. So we, some of this, we really have to wrestle through. Starting qualitatively and then we have to start to look at scenario planning and building port sample portfolios and understand the trade-offs. Exactly like you're saying, this might have this benefit. It might have a reliability component. It might have a resiliency component. It might have a transmission, which also has net impacts. Fish impacts from hydro. I mean, we're going to have to weigh through those portfolios when we get to the options and test what those qualitative values really look like.
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I mean, we, we see the cost of, of the impacts. The tangible one to me is the mitigation that we're having to do for the fish on all the, on the dams, right? That's. Interface every, every month almost. Um. So one of the things that I took away from when I had this presentation when Crystal Ball was here. The load in, increase the region. And she said that the near-term one was almost all. Because of the data. And through, because I think that, that last time was like a three percent increase year, year over year. And she said that it was all. Majority based on uh those types of uses. That information is good to know because in this community, we hear all the time, not all the time, we hear. That electrification is going to cause the grid to fail. And that what we're seeing in, in all of these scenario plannings that we're doing for is all because of electrification. And when in fact. Electrification is just a very small portion of it and, and it's gradual and incremental. Whereas if you throw a huge data farm out there, we, if, if the increase on the reason is three percent. Due to data farms. That's good knowledge to have to be able to share with the community. Because. I'm here to get it. Yeah. Oh, if everybody drives electric cars, we electrify all of our building stock, the grids, we're going to have brownouts and it's going to fail. And, and that's not, in my view, that's not necessarily the case because it's incredible that we can build to that and, and plan for that. So knowing that percentage that is would be, would be helpful for me if, if we have it kind of built in there. Yeah. I mean, I saw one where it was a. It was, it might have been Elon built one down in Georgia somewhere. And they could, the power company couldn't serve it. Those, the transmission. So he just brought in twenty-eight semis with generators in them. And he's running chip diesel generators to power his. AI server farm. Because it was going to be three years before they can serve them. He said, well, I don't want to wait three years. So he's got twenty-eight semis filled with diesel generators running to power. With Bitcoins and, and X. So that to me is one of the. Points that is good to get hugs the public when they say that the grid's going to fail because of. We need electric cars.
We talked a little bit about lobbying. Perhaps we could educate our legislators on this compacted. They don't already know. That wasn't necessarily, but if that's something that we are concerned of, which it seems like we should be. If there's some opportunity there because it's the only way we have any influence over it.
Commissioner Carlson, I would love to tap into this group to help with that. There's a number of us at PNUCK, Pacific Northwest Utility Conference Committee. And what makes that kind of a unique group is it is both investor-owned utilities and consumer-owned utilities. And also industry partners like BPA, for example. And one of our concerns, it, what, what's going to cause the grid to, to be strained and potentially even, even fail. Is the fact that you're going to not be able to synchronize supply and demand. There will be an out scripting and it not particular to electric vehicles in your case. But there are a lot of administrative and policy hurdles with building transmission, with building generation. Which causes other unintended consequences. If even locally, if you think the energy crisis of two thousand and one, here in Eugene. Sub fired up diesel generators. Because there was a shortage of supply. It was a bad hydro year. They bought them or they, yeah. There, there are, are consequences to, to some of these, this, this planning. And so now we have started reaching out to, and I say we, the industry has started reaching out to more and more. Commissioners, to more and more legislators around different, different things that can be done. Both state by state and potentially federally. So we'll get back to you on that.
Because this is the time that they're drafting bills that get submitted for next year's. If there's anything to do, I mean, you got to tee it up because it takes years for something to actually go. And from what I heard from this, we are already a decade behind.
Most of the issues we were talking about here will tend to be regionally, which then becomes either group, regional groups. Pools or state interstate agreements or potentially federally. State by state, it's, it's a little bit more challenging, but there's some specifics and we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you all.
File of transmission design.
All right.
Future board agendas.
So President McCray, the only thing that I wanted to get your take on, and it seems like it has, at least in a couple of individual comments. That I asked commissioners about, wanted to, I know we reached out about a potential work session in a couple of weeks. It seems like because of the topic and the fact that we have a work session scheduled in October. We'd like to have maybe a, an extended work session in October to cover both some of the qualitative updates that Brian was talking about, as well as the business model discussion. There's some overlap there. And so the, the proposal would be to do that on October fifteenth. And maybe go from five o'clock to seven thirty or somewhere in there and just extend that since that's already on the calendar. Seems like as general success. I know one commissioner may, may or may not be telecommuting in from somewhere. But it seems like it has general support.
Yeah, so everybody on that.
The other thing, just a number of, of different strategic sessions to be added or will. In, in two thousand and twenty-five, plus I'll get with staff and talk about some of the, the ways that we can review. Just generally customer programs and customer service policies throughout two thousand and twenty-five. But you'll notice actually two thousand and twenty-five is starting to. You, you won't really mind that's starting to fill up.
Sounds like Barovsky's problem.
Right, so there's two thousand and twenty-five, I think we're going to have to, and, and maybe we can start this next month or so. Really focused in on what, what we want to get done in two thousand and twenty-five. There's some, a few really big things that we need to do and we need to concentrate on those things. That's all I have to say.
Great, thanks. Rappah, any comments, questions?
I think just for the record, I'm going to be out of the country on a work session. My best to, and I don't know. I, I scheduled mine before you scheduled yours. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good. I just. Get my, where are you going?
I'll just make sure I have my list of John Brown acronyms and common phrases that I can throw out and just so that we feel his presence.
It's a solid plan.
Otherwise it'll be death by a thousand cuts.
All right, Trey, game on. All right. Meeting adjourned.
After how many years is this done? You've got to have at least a few say.